We will call this meeting to order at 7:08 PM. This is a regular meeting of the governing body of the Borough of Bloomingdale. I ask that everyone please now rise to salute our meeting in the slide. I'd ask Tiffany if you would just join us and lead us in the graduation. Someone here ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a mission under God indivisible, with liberty as our own.
Roll call please.
Mayor Dunleavy.
Here.
Councilmember Yasiastie.
Here.
Costin.
Here.
Demotta.
Here.
Delarippe.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Hassan Demire.
Here. Also with us this evening is our Borough Clerk Jean McCarthy. Our Borough Attorney Corinne Semra. Our Borough Treasurer Sherry Gallagher. Those of you who may call her out. And also our Borough Auditor Andy Pascal from Samuel Klein Company. Thank you Andy for being here this evening. This is an official meeting of the governing body of the Borough of Bloomingdale. January 4th, 2014. The date, time, and place of this official meeting was faxed and mailed to all over this media and posted here at Borough Hall. The first order of business we have this evening is a presentation to members of a wonderful program that our rep director Gail, we'll introduce in a moment, started how many years ago?
How close, Brett?
Fifty many years ago.
Some of them are already in college. How's that?
A program called Kids Who Care. And it is open to our eighth graders at the Walter T. Murphy School. And the goal of the program is to instill community service and ask these young adults to participate and become engaged in the community. That's exactly what they do. They help at all our events. They participate at our community events, our public events, our cleanup days, our Pride Day festival. They help our rec department run various programs. And they're very, very active. And I just hope it's just the beginning of what these young adults will do in our communities going forward. I'm going to step off today. I was going to ask the council to join me, but if you guys would just stay because there's just two members this evening. I'll explain why in a moment. The two members with us this evening are kids who really, really care. They're here this evening.
It's not much of a...
They, you know, between baseball and soccer and particularly tomorrow the eighth grade leave for their eighth grade trip to Gettysburg. So Gail and I were talking earlier, we should probably start doing this a little earlier in the year, possibly April before spring sports start or even in March or even after graduation. So something we'll talk about. But as I stated earlier, it is a great program that Gail had established and our participation amongst our eighth grade class is quite large. I mean, normally we get well over eighty percent of the class itself, the graduating class participated. So tonight it's a great honor that I present the two individuals who are with us this evening a certificate before I call you up. It reads, it's a certificate of appreciation for your completion of 22 hours or more of community service for the Bloomingdale Recreation Kids Who Care Program from September 2013 through June 2014. And this will be presented today, the 20th day of May 2014, by the governing body of the Borough of Bloomingdale. And again, we're extremely proud as mayor. I am extremely proud of you guys for your involvement. And I do see the two of you particularly at all our events. And I wish you well in high school and continue your community involvement. And the first recipient is Tiffany Martin. I'll also present each with a borough pin or your post name. Will you come to the side, Tiffany? And again, our next gentleman, very proud to call him up here. And again, I'm honored to do so. And that is Nicholas Schlagel. Nicholas. Again, I hope you stay involved in the community. I know the two of you will. And again, we appreciate nothing but thank you both for all the good work you did. Keep it up. Feel like a high school again. Thanks guys very much. Parents, thank you very much for having me this evening.
Thank you for your time.
And let's have round calls for Gail.
What we're going to do is we're going to have a private ceremony at the rec center in June, maybe after graduation, like a little piece of party.
I'll come to the school if they want to do it.
Would you do it? They don't... Yeah, we'll do it.
Roll with that to me, please. You let me out, whatever we can do.
I will.
Tiffany, thanks. Nick, yeah. Thank you very much. Good night, guys.
Thank you.
So Gail said the kids had a tax to go to Gettysburg. I said my kids are wearing a t-shirt and a shirt. But no, it's a great program, so I'm glad those were here. Okay. This evening, we have our second and final reading of public hearing of the 2014 municipal budget. We will first have a presentation by our budget chairperson, Councilman Yasiastie, and then we will present the budget, open for public comment, and answer any questions that anyone may have. But I think it's important that first we have Ray's presentation, that bring insight to and open up possible additional questions for anyone. So with that said, before we move to move the budget along and have public comment, I have the floor is yours, Councilor.
Yeah, and the manager suggests that we leave this as an open dialogue with his questions. Just raise your hand if you have a...
I would ask the questions we made during the public hearing.
Would you rather you pay the escalator? It's not as if you could...
It has to be during the public hearing.
Certainly would be best because you have to have a public hearing for the budget. And it's also good to have whatever comments sort of during that public hearing or the record that Jane keeps. And then you could also answer the questions then at the public hearing. Because we're going to have tonight, potentially, there could be up to three public hearings on the budget. If the final adoption, a maybe amended, so there could be an opportunity for those questions and answers.
It's excellent.
What I also could do is introduce and have a beginning of public comment, let Ray do his presentation during public comment, and let comments occur at that time. That's what we're doing.
We've got a little more high tech, as you know.
You're right. We can open public comment at that point, then you'll go to them. Okay, so now what I need to do is I need, we have to do a few things first. First, I need a motion, my resolution.
Five point ten.
Five point ten for the reading of the budget by title. So, who moves that? Who moves that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Whereas NJSA 48-4-8, that's amended, provides that the budget shall be read and full at the public hearing, where that agreement that is made read by title only if one, at least one week prior to the date of the hearing, a complete public approved budget made shall be made available for public inspection in a free public library, if any, of a municipality, in the free county libraries or regional libraries located in the municipality, or if no county libraries or regional libraries are located in the municipality. Public office are dead delegated responsibility for delivering copies of the two budget to such libraries shall forward to the governing body in attestation that each such document is made, and B is made available to each person requesting the same, or instead being enjoyed the public hearing. Now therefore, being as all by the mayor and council of the Borough of Bloomingdale that is hereby declared that the provisions of NJSA 48, which had been amended, set forth in subsections, and one B have been met, and therefore the budget for 2014 shall be read by title on...
Okay, go over this, that, fore, going resolution, and moves it. Read by title. Who moves that for adoption? Who moves that? Second? And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Costin.
Yes.
Demotta.
Yes.
Delarippe.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes. Hassan Demire.
Yes.
Yasiastie.
Yes. Okay, the resolution's now adopted. Now I will extend a motion to open the hearing on the budget. Who moves that?
Councilmember Demotta.
Yes.
Delarippe.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes. Hassan Demire.
Yes.
Yasiastie.
Yes.
Costin.
Yes.
Yasiastie.
Yes.
Costin.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, this is the time fixed for public hearing of municipal budget and tax resolution for 2014. The budget was approved by the governing body on April 15, 2014, was advertised required by law on April 19, 2014. Together with notice of hearing for this time, printed copies have been made available to the public during the past week, and supplies appear for anyone who is desiring a copy or else.
Thank you. Anyone who has not secured a copy of the budget, they do so. They are here at this location before anyone needs to review. Before we open the public hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. We're going to go a little different. Ray is going to give his presentation, and then each person designed to be heard will raise and give his or her name, address before speaking. I'll recognize speaker one at a time in order of rising or raising your hand as nearly as I can determine. I'll address all questions to the chair. Where necessary, they'll refer to the individual member of the governing body or municipal officials. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal budget. Before us, school or county matters are not proper subjects at this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered here tonight. And now declare the open, the public hearing open on municipal budget and tax resolution for 2014. Again, we will begin with Councilman Yasiastie's presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I was starting to say, you've noticed the two TVs here, we've got a little more high tech, but I'm still trying to figure this whole thing out. I switched from PowerPoint to Excel. Excel gives you a lot of more details. So I may need Councilman Delarippe's help here. So bear with me. Let's see if we can turn this on. Your municipal budget, our municipal budget. Let's see. First thing I want to just go over is the year, whole year comparisons. Our residential assessed value has actually gone up in the year 2014 by 3.9 million. The offset to that is all the commercial and other category, vacant land, things of that sort. We've lost some assessed value there, so $7.2 million loss there. That's a huge hit. Total loss of 3.3 million coming into the year. Our average, we always do the budget based on the increase or decrease based on average assessed home. Okay, so the numbers you will see tonight is based on an average home. The municipal levy has actually gone down by 83,000 dollars. Our rate therefore has gone down. Well, we have decreased the rate in order to bring our budget in at zero this year. Okay, so after all said and done, our municipal is going up a couple of dollars, our library is going down a couple of dollars, net-net zero tax increases this year, which is great news. The reason why I'm putting this up, this is not my taxes, but a copy of a tax bill that we all see. I want to point out that the top three lines that you see on your tax bill, the county tax, the school tax, and the county open space tax. This body that you see in front of you, your municipal government, has no say in what these amounts go up or down each year. We have no say for school taxes. We have no say for county taxes. Okay, just keep that in mind. The only thing that we control are the municipal, local municipal taxes and municipal open state tax, open space tax, which was passed by referendum, so it's a percentage. It shows up on your bill. As well as the library tax, a few years ago, it was broken up. It used to be a part of the municipal tax. It was broken up a few years back. So you will see those three items, and those are the only things that we have to say. Okay, so your average tax breakdown, this is very important to understand, and again, based on an average assessed value. Your schools make 53.8 percent of your taxes. Again, we have no say in that. Okay, so I know in this town, our taxes are very high, but keep in mind, we only control a portion of that, right? Seventy, seventy-three point seven percent of the taxes, we have no say. Municipal portion for the 2,500, it's the only portion that we control. And these numbers that you're seeing before you, these are in the final numbers. The school tax is the final number, so this year we're going to see a $5,300 school tax as an average, or average amount, I should say. Municipal is the final. That's going to be the values that you're going to be seeing. The county has not introduced the budget. It's going to be coming in, but they're writing the paper down, they're going to come flat. So that's going to be... So we'll see what that goes at. From early calculations, it might be a slight negative for residents of Bloomingdale, which is going to be... This is one of my favorite charts because it kind of shows, you know, in prior years, last year we had a $53 tax increase that this body controls, we get $53. But in the past, you can see where there was a low tax increase, the following year was a huge tax increase, and it got even worse, right? But we're going the right direction and it's going to continue to go that way. So that's some reassurance that I wanted to make sure we point out here. And, you know, for the last three years, okay, how does that stack up to prior three years? I mean, it's pretty clear here, but I just wanted to point that out. Seventy-one percent less tax increase compared to the same period before that. That's something that we have control, I'm proud of every single one of you for doing that. Our municipal taxes, there it is, 143 over the last three years. The three years prior to that was $487. And I know John sitting there, he's probably saying, "Show the four years, show the four years," because he's been the mayor for the last four years, and showing that last four years, sixty percent less of a tax increase prior to the mayor before. Okay, $267 total compared to $670. And again, this is what we control, not your total tax. We don't control that. The portion that we control, we have held in check. And our debt, how much should we owe now? Well, our debt's going the right way. Okay, over the last three years, it's gone from 11 million to 10 million to 9 million. It's going the right direction. And I like to break down, that $2,500 that we control, so you better understand where your tax dollars go. Public safety is $708 a year. That includes your police, fire, first aid, animal control, sheltering, all those animals. All of that is costing you $700 a year. Statutory expenses like health insurance, pension, social security, workman's comp, unemployment, all of those add up to $585 a year out of your taxes. Okay, that's the $2,500 that we control. EPW services, okay, road repairs, maintenance, sanitation, picking up your garbage, salting out there, removing up snow, it's costing us $422. Our debt is $340 a year, which we're focused on, we want to reduce that as quick as possible. Administration professionals, you know, everyone that works upstairs, you are mayor and council, legal, audit, engineering, prosecution, $260 a year. And we have other expenses, like utilities, gas, and these, $193 a year. All of the boards and committees, recreation, planning board probably the biggest expense out of that category is costing us $50 a year. Okay, that's the breakdown of our taxes. So I can go into Q and A, or I can go into more detail in itself. I don't know if you want to do this, should I continue on? I'm going into more detail. This is why I need bridges out. Actually, it's really, just a fine chart. That's what just goes in the summer. Thank you. Thank you for coming this morning. Go next to the microphones. Everyone see that? Then you make it a little bit bigger.
I thought you said for me?
Our revenues, to compare year over year, our revenues have gone up. Also have our expenses, okay? This is a balanced budget, so that means the revenues and the expenses will be equal. Everything you're seeing up here, okay, the amount that we use out of surplus, the amount of revenue that comes from shared services, state aid, local revenues, you know, pilot that we just agreed to last year. All of these fees reduce the amount that you and I have to pay in taxes. So we want to see these numbers grow, and we want to see this number go down because that's the amount that we have to pay. Okay? And if you reduce, if you take out the library, year over year, our taxes have actually, the amount that we have to pay has actually gone down by 1.1 percent. Our debt has gone down, it's going the right way. Our intern locals are, have gone up, and we're collecting more. Library, what we allocate to library, and you can go line by line, let's see. We have to reserve some for uncollected taxes, so that's a part of our expenses that we put in every year. This deferred charge is, let's see, three years ago, we did that reassessment, and this is the final year that we have to make that payment. After this year, it's gone, so this is going to be zero financially unless we have any other emergency expenses coming up. So far, so good, but I'm looking at share. So that's it. That's very good. Let's see, a portion of our health insurance that allows to put it outside the cap, by the way, this is everything that's outside the cap. Snow removal, we did do an emergency on, but because it was before we adopted the budget, we can actually put it in this year's budget, so we don't have to defer it. Tax appeals cost us money each year, right? So we budget for that. This grant, the money is going to come in, we just have to get the letters. It's going to probably be around the same amount, so the revenue we get from it is going to equal the expense. So this is a net zero being. Don't be concerned that the grants are going down. It's not going down, it's just a budget number. And capital improvements, we need to have a capital improvement budget in order to adopt, adopt and improve construction, right? We have to have this capital improvement budget. Like last year, we had 50, we haven't even spent it yet, when the biggest portion was roughly broke. Salaries have gone up 6.9 percent. Other expenses have gone up 9 percent. Our statutory expenses, the biggest one being pension, has gone down. Okay? And then you can go into even more detail. This really gets to be really tiny to read. I don't know how much bigger you make the bridge. The biggest one is the police has gone up, $42,000. Makes sense, we had new officers come on board last year, but we do have a retirement coming up, so this number will go down next year. So that's, that's good news. And that's our biggest expense. Streets and roads, as a result of the bad winter we had, has gone up. We spent it already, so we have to put it in the budget. Garbage, trash removal, these are just regular salary increases that you're seeing here. And we can go line by line, you know, at the end of the day, there's a 5.4 percent that you're seeing on page one. That's a total increase, I'm sorry. The tax portion that we take, it's not showing up so well here. Bridge, I guess here it goes smaller. But you can see it that way. Yeah, I think this is a, we don't have the, we haven't purchased the office license to be able to edit. This is just a viewing license that we have here. And then other expenses, same thing, the biggest portion, if I go back to the summary, right, you're seeing that our other expenses went up, $226,000. Well, the biggest expense was our health insurance has gone up, $123,000. And that's not because the rate been up, the rate we actually locked in last year, which that was the good news. What we had new hires and people got married and had children, so they moved from one state to the next, and that was the increase that we noticed this year. Our tipping fees have gone up, our utilities go up every year, right? Some of the things we can't do anything about. Streets and roads, again, because of the bad winter we had, it's gone up. And just one by one, you can go through it. Workman's comp, it's just a bill to get, we got to pay it. Our legal has gone down. Thank you, Brett. And it's about a 10 percent overall increase. Some of it is outside cap, it's insured services, and some of it is within. Again, I'm going to wait in case anyone has any detailed, more detailed questions, otherwise it's tough to read. I recognize that.
Before we go out to, if you're done, you have to just hold the day, hold your back. You're going to stay out there and hold public comment.
I can put my cover.
All right, thank you, Brett. And again, this PowerPoint is available, you know, after tonight, if anyone wants to keep down that question.
It'll be posted online.
It'll be posted online.
So you can download it and see.
Okay, we're in the public hearing with Ray's presentation, so at this time, if anyone does wish to speak to the 2014 budget, please hit on up, state your name and address for the record, and address your questions to the chair. I'll defer to those who will help me answer. So anyone who wishes to speak, please come on.
Is this Sandy Avenue? What municipal expenses were used that were offset by the pilot program this year?
Well, the pilot is a revenue I came in.
Yes, I know.
Right, so the total revenue is going to help reduce the amount that we have to ask the residents.
Well, according to the coordinates, you have to, it's supposed to be effectuated by the dedication of funding for the offset of previous identified and established municipal expenses. So I'm asking you, which were the identified municipal expenses that were offset by the pilot program?
Well, this should be used for tax relief.
But it's supposed to be used for...
That's one of the uses.
But it has to be used for... You didn't make it use any debt, because you paid actually less debt, less debt, well, this year than you did last year. So that was the big thing that you kept saying, "Well, last year or the year before" that was the big thing that you kept saying, well, last year or the year before that, oh, we're gonna reduce our debt, we're gonna reduce our debt, you didn't reduce debt, period. So that was not done.
That's going down, sort of.
That's only going down because the principal amount's going down, but you didn't include the additional bond anticipation notes that you just took out, and also the additional by the unit taking that now for, uh, for the water and sewer, that was on the agenda. So I mean, really, our, our debt now, including the new bond anticipation notes that were issued in the last meeting, is 11 million. That's higher than it was previously, so it's not going down.
As of the end of the year, it's 9.81, as we just spoke about.
But 2014 is what you're talking about.
This is a municipal, right, this is a municipal debt.
Yeah, I'm talking, I'm talking municipal debt, is that 11,953? That when you consider the new debt you just took out.
And then last year was 9.81.
And at the end of 2000 and... Let's see, 2012, it was 9,932, and 2011 was 9,267.
I don't know what gone down, it's really down.
I'm, I'm looking at how much debt, not how much bond anticipation notes that were not issued, but how much debt is actually.
The debt, the debt statements, the debt that he showed on a three-year analysis are from our, our annual financial statements.
I used, I have the actual annual financial statement.
So your 9.3 and your other number are not correct numbers?
Well, if I look at the balance at 7/31/12, the total amount of bond anticipation notes was 3,695.
Again, the documents, the numbers in Councilman's presentation are from our audited annual financial statements.
That's exactly what I'm taking from. And the total amount of bond anticipation notes was 3,695, our regular general capital fund was 3,695.
Did you say on the 7/31, that was after we paid down 2,000?
12/31/12, sorry, I was looking at, uh, 9,352.
Which document are you talking about online? You're talking about the 2013 annual financial statement?
This is 2012, I also have the 2013, the Toronto Balance General Capital Fund, which shows the amount of.
I just wanted to point out that the 2013 annual financial statement that is online is clearly stated as un-audited.
Oh, I know that.
Okay.
I don't know why it's still not out there yet, but, yeah, well, we previously were audited by this time, the past couple of years.
No.
No.
That is not true.
Absolutely not.
I think last year's audit was, uh.
June and July, I had to come back from vacation, July and December.
Well, Linda, do you disagree that debt is going down?
Yes, I do.
You disagree with the statement?
Yes, I do. I just, and I also don't agree that you are following the ordinance states for the pilot program, because the pilot program specifically said it was going to be used through dedication of funding of for an offset of previous identified and established municipal expenses, including payments on prior debt obligations.
Keep on reading.
And you can't, I don't have the entire.
Don't stop, you're being very selective. It also says it's, it's gonna be used to offset taxes.
To get, whatever, an overall reduction of the municipal budget, kind of reduction of municipal taxes.
And that's what it is.
But you can't, they say you use it for new expenses, and you can't do that.
Could you identify which new expenses we are using it for?
Well, if you tell me you haven't used it for any old expenses, then you're using it to new expenses.
No, he's merely saying he doesn't have handy a, a itemized list of everything that's old, which is everything that's. Not necessary, as again.
Yes, that's.
As Councilman Yaski pointed out, you're being very selective on to which sentences of that ordinance you're using.
Do you wanna show me where, I'll get the order, do you wanna show me where in the ordinance it says that you can do what you're doing?
To reduce debt?
No, no, you're not reducing the debt.
Or making payments, yes. If we didn't put that money in there, then it would go up further.
You're making required payments.
I'm sorry?
You're making just the required payments, you're not making any additional payments, so you're not really reducing debt.
Was the additional payment on bonds?
No.
You can't, you're just taking it on less bond anticipation notes.
On your notes, yeah, but we didn't get the full amount.
Right, right.
So that's not a reason.
Well, you didn't get the full amount, but, but where was the 355,000 dollars used? Was it used by new expenses or on old expenses?
It was applied as a revenue.
Right, so you didn't use it for old expenses.
It offset, it offset the total cost of the operating budget, thus reducing taxes for our homeowners, that's the sole purpose of the pilot.
Sole purpose of the pilot.
The intent of the pilot was to reduce debt, reduce taxes. That's exactly what we're achieving.
I don't get what you're saying, new or old, our health insurance went up 140,000 now.
I'm telling you.
You call that new or old?
That's new.
Okay, so.
No funding from a pilot agreement shall be relied to support new projects, programs, or staffing of the borough, as this funding shall be dedicated 100% to reduce the overall tax levy of the borough of Bloomingdale. No, you, you used it for new expenses.
No.
We used it to offset the tax levy of the.
But you used it for new expenses. Now, if you were to take.
Look at the highlighted cell right now, you'll see there's 818,000 dollars in existing old ta, um, health insurance, carried forward from 2013, that is well in excess of 355,000 dollars.
Well, that's why my question was initially, which expenses did you use to offset it? And the answer wasn't given to me.
Well, you could pick any one of the existing ones.
Pick one.
There was 10 million dollars in there last year.
But you were supposed to have.
That's in there this year.
Listen, budgeting is not done that way. We don't sit there. Okay, if you know that, then why are you asking that?
I'm asking the question, that's what the ordinance states.
Because you're spinning it, right?
No, that's what the.
That's the reason why you're asking that question, if you know it.
I, I do not know that, because that's not.
But I said, I know it. Budgeting is not done, hey, here's new revenue, here's the line items, I'm gonna apply.
Then why was the ordinance written that way? I didn't write the ordinance.
In other words, we're not gonna go and buy new bicycles.
Right.
So you're not, you're not really following the ordinance? So you're not really following the ordinance?
Certainly not.
Well, based on, I guess, your understanding of it, we are not following, but we brought in zero taxes, and if it's all about taxes, right, if it's all about taxes, zero, you can't beat, right? It's, it's the number that we've all been fighting.
But look at how much, how much your expenses are going up, and you're using 400,000 dollars of surplus, plus this 355,000 dollars of money coming from the, from Avalon Bay, now what are you gonna do next year? I think that's, I guess, 500 something thousand dollars left.
Right.
So you're just gonna eventually use it all up and then.
Well, we have retirements coming up, there's gonna be less expenses next, next year.
I, I just.
It's probably a very expensive winter, that's included in these expenses going up.
Oh, I know what it's like, we had a very expensive winter.
Okay.
And I know what it's like when people attack you for it, which I'm not doing, which was done previously.
If I could just say, I did bring that exact point up, if you recall during our committee meetings, because I was not comfortable using surplus that could not be renewed, um, we've identified places where that can be renewed.
And we all think.
Some of them, I do not believe we comment on at this time, but as Councilman has, well, there are retirements.
Right, exactly.
There are other things coming where we believe that that stuff will be realized back. And if there's a slight shortfall, then we do have additional surplus, just like every year, if you, if you, your forecasting's a little short, or if it's high, then we'll get more surplus. But, you know, I did bring that concern up, and we went it over, went over it, and it appeared that based on this budget, that surplus we're using this year will be renewed next year, as you said. You know, we are, we'll be getting, I'm sorry, I don't have the number, however much more pilot money next year.
351.
I'm sorry?
That's, that's 351.
Right. So, I mean, that only leaves us 150,000 dollars short, as we said, there are other things coming.
But that's saying nothing else happens. And, I mean, that, we all know, is very difficult to say, but my, my concern is just that.
Well, that's why you wanna leave money in the bank, rather than spending it down for the last penny.
I understand that.
Okay.
But my concern still is that, that the ordinance is written in a certain manner, and I'm sure it was written this way for a reason, but I just wanted to know why it wasn't being followed.
The intent of the ordinance was clearly written so that the pilot money could not be used to, um, to, lack of a better word, buy, you know, new toys. It was to be used for, for debt reduction and tax stabilization, by applying it as a revenue. And, you know, you're asking what specifically expenses to apply to, again, as Councilman points out, that's not how's budgeting is done, it was applied as a revenue, thus reducing the overall expense you and I as taxpayers have to pay. Pick one, for health insurance, for snowplow.
But then you did not, I guess, follow the ordinance.
We absolutely did follow the ordinance.
Well, but if you did, you'd be able to tell me which expenditures you reduced, and you haven't.
Tax relief.
And you haven't, and you have not reduced the debt at all.
No, no, tax relief.
And you have not reduced the debt, and that you specifically said time and time.
Timeout, timeout. We could have applied 100% of it to debt and then raised taxes, we decided not to do that, we decided to not raise taxes, okay? If that would've made you happier, this is where we differ, okay? You would've increased taxes.
No, I.
And then reduced debt.
No, I didn't.
If that's your method, and that's what you're recommending, we thought about that, but we decided, you know what, tax relief was more important, because it's all about taxes.
Well, first of all, I never would've recommended that we increase taxes, so you're just putting words in my mouth to make it sound ridiculous, you need to forget about that.
Well, if you wanted to do that.
Now, I'm into it, and I was respectful of you, I would appreciate the same respect. I'm just trying to find out why you said that you were going to use it to reduce our debt, which was killing us. I mean, you got up there and said, it's killing us, this debt, we've gotta reduce this debt. Why aren't you paying any additional debt load? And why are you taking out more bond anticipation notes?
Right?
You're not?
Well, that's, that would be for this year, but we're not even buying money.
No, the notes this year were for Rafton Road, which.
And the Bollows.
I'm sorry?
There were the Bollows from the prior years, and then we had to add Rafton Road.
Right.
That's all we added.
Position 2.8 million. Additional 2.8 million was added.
In new debt? No, no.
In anticipation notes, because previously, bond anticipation notes was, um, 3,634, and you issued 6,100,000 at the last meeting.
Not true, it was over 4 million dollars debt from last year's bond, our bond anticipation notes.
Well, that's not.
It was almost 500, absolutely. I just, I just did the bond closing paperwork, so.
One thing that it was, I went to the, um, bond anticipation notes, the ones that were issued, and it's 3,360.
Absolutely not, it was over 4, it was almost 5 million dollars.
Okay, I'm, so that's right, if you add up the ones that were issued, but not what I. Okay, then it was 5,700, but we took out 6,100,000.
We have to do Rafton Road, I have to pay the contractors.
But we, but we took out more debt.
Well, of course, I, it was authorized.
But to be offset by DOT grant and an assessment, and there is a borough obligation on Rafton Road, it's no secret, it's a good project for the borough.
I have another question, um, please, you can answer it, on the, um, when you did the 2% cap calculation, how come there was an amount put in there for the, um, increase in bond payments?
Are you referring to 36?
I don't have a question for you, right, the one for the 2% cap.
Oh, okay. You're referring to 36, that's tax level cap. You'll see.
She said bond increases, and there wasn't any bond increase.
You're talking the amount of debt surplus, is that mine?
Right.
133,000.
Right, there was a decrease in the bond payments, not an increase.
Yeah, there was calculation behind that, and, uh, it's, of course, from that state of capital.
Does it happen from this effort?
There's this big calculation, uh, with that, about the capital, um, unbalance, and the tax, and the work of, of state, I don't have it in front of me.
Could you email to me, or have Jay emailed to me a calculation for me?
Yes.
You did 1206 that I see there, it's exactly the amount from last year, it's always outside the cap.
Not the entire debt payment, usually isn't. The previous year, it was, it's supposedly 2%, 92%, it was the debt payment plus 2%, anything above that amount.
Yeah, 27.
I don't have it all in front of me.
Yeah, it tells you it's excluded, all of our debt is excluded from that.
It never used to be.
Yeah, it's, it's been happening for at least three years, but.
Not in 2000, um, not last year was on the front of it. Okay, I deserve the right to come up again.
Certainly. Anyone else wishing, please come up, state your name and address for the record, please. Yes? How are you?
Good, thank you. Linda Schardman, to West Shore Road. I, what I wanted to ask, when Brad, as soon as you started, was, I looked over the budget, but what you presented was not the budget I looked over, and I applaud the use of technology, except for those sitting there, we can't see that. And to tell me that I have to follow that, and then I can get a copy after you vote on it, why, are there, I was gonna ask you, are there copies of that for us tonight?
Hmm, I, I can print some, I just completed the presentation last night, I wanted, that's why.
Because, as good as I've always thought that would be, it really is useless when it's tax law.
Well, we're, again, it's new, it's new to us too, so, from a technology standpoint, we're trying to, you know, make it better, it didn't exist.
I, I understand that, I'm just waiting for the cameras.
But let me, I just wanna state for the record, that what we are doing here is, you know, above and beyond what is legally necessary to do, because we choose to do it, to be transparent, to be as open to the public as we can. Raise hours and hours of work to put together this presentation is not required, but we choose to do it, because we feel it's the right thing to do. We simply, you know, introduce the budget, the document you have in front of you, and hear public comment, and move to, and move to adopt. We choose to do a lot more, so, I just, you know, for you to say, why is that available prior, you know, it just.
Well, tonight, just run it off.
What I'm saying, it doesn't have, it doesn't, just so you know.
It would be so much easier to follow if I hadn't paid.
I just wanna say for the record.
I can't see that.
Just so you know, it doesn't have to be, it is just something we choose to do, which has never been done by a government body previously, so, again, just more information for the residents to understand the budget.
Well, actually, I don't agree with that. I think that we had a lot more detail in other budgets, and I read the paper, and I see our neighboring towns, when they introduced the budget, they actually published the, the introduction at the introduction, so you have it beforehand, I mean, I read about all the local towns, and having gone through it and seeing this, I, I really.
You don't publish it.
Just wanna say, I couldn't follow it, and I understand that you're trying to, that you're trying to use technology, and I applaud what you're trying, but I just felt very frustrated that I couldn't see that as you were describing.
There's this.
I have that.
I take that and turn it into, I'll, that's the last.
But in order to ask questions of you, it, you wouldn't really be able to come here tonight, look at that and ask a question.
And, and you know what, point taken, and, and, you know, I'll just include it, I
Okay.
I'm sending you next year, and make sure that you have it down.
Well, I thank you for that, but, but that's just my input on that. My first question will be simple, I'm still coming back about this. Where is the interest for the Walter T. Burke in school lights taken from in this budget?
I'll defer to treasurer.
It's coming out the road.
Right.
Thank you, that was my, that was, I was interested in that. The, uh, the other question I have is very simple. When you did this budget, what did you calculate as debt?
Did we calculate the payment?
Was it the bonds, bond anticipation notes issued, bond anticipation notes not issued? What makes up the total amount of debt?
All, all of it. Well, I mean, I'll defer, our treasurer's right here, I'm just.
Yeah, everything is included.
Everything's included.
The bonds, the notes, everything.
And that sum amounts to.
As of year end 2013, it was 9.8 million dollars.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
What is it for 2014? Because that's the 2014 budget.
Right, for, for the budget, all we have to account for is the payment of the principal and interest on the bonds, and then the bond anticipation notes, the interest on that, and there may be something, uh, principal on that is, uh, we have to pay as well, there's schools that we have to follow, there's certain portions that we have to pay, so whatever was absolutely necessary is budgeted for.
What did we pay in excess of what was required to be paid?
As, as Linda pointed out, we didn't use it to reduce debt, we used it to offset the tax even.
Well, I, I appreciate that, that way, but, boy, in my. Well, I, I appreciate that, that way, but boy, in my head, at meeting after meeting, was on the pilot, and we will reduce our debt, our debt service, we will reduce our debt. And I appreciate the fact that my, you know, with your 26% of the budget, you are not going to increase the debt, except, as John said, and I quote, "Our goal is not to borrow any new money this year, but to continue to reduce debt."
It is our goal. And this year, again, the pilot money, it's, it's the first year we're realizing any revenue from the pilot, and we're not even realizing 100% of it. I mean, you know, we, we apply it as a revenue to stabilize taxes this year. If, if, if in 2015, uh, we have 100% realization, which we will of the pilot, and if, if within our budget, we can, we can freeze taxes and, let's say, use $75,000 of pilot money to reduce pure notes, that would be a goal of the governing body.
Mayor, if I could, because I think we put together, I wrote the ordinance based on the direction of the governing body, and Mrs. Shortman was one of the people who asked for the ordinance. I, I, a couple things. From what I understand, first of all, the pilot itself, in the first year, in many communities, you don't receive any payment. This town negotiated a very good pilot where you had over $300,000 come in, but the first payment didn't come in until, and rightly so, until sometime in the first quarter, I think it was in March, that the first payment came in. If I understand right, at that point, you couldn't use the pilot money necessary to start paying down debt. But the spirit of the ordinance, and what it said was basically, and I can remember the discussions, everyone wanted to make sure it was for taxpayer relief. If it was just to pay down debt, that's all the ordinance would have said. And if, if I'm looking at this, from the way we wrote the ordinance, the way it reads is, first of all, if you take the pilot money out of the budget, there's a 3% budget increase. So to me, it's taxpayer relief. It's not, there's money that hasn't been spent outside the cap, which would have said, "Okay, the pilot money came in, and suddenly we're going above and beyond." There's no money outside of the cap, from what I can tell, when I heard no new employees, no new programs, that, you know, something that far exceeds what we would do in the normal course. And you really can't match, so to speak, when you look at this budget, I think it's the questions that come and gone, where you'd say, "In a budget, can you actually match?" It's not like open space, where it's an escrow, you know? But when I look at it in the totality, and, and remembering all the discussion, the pilot was there first for taxpayer relief. Yes, one of the things was debt reduction, which I don't think would have been even possible this year, but still, um, if you take it out, there's a, there's almost a $400,000 deficit. You put it in, and that 3% tax increase ends up zero. It's taxpayer relief that way too. So I, you know, I just thought I would try to explain, after sitting here and writing it, you can't totally direct the funds, but I think what the ordinance sought to, to result in was that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be applied to some new program. I think that was the concern, or to the taxpayers, if I remember the discussion. I think that's the way I read it and see, I think that's the way it worked.
Well, my memory is, and I'm sure that you wrote it and you understood how it would be, but I never thought taxpayer relief was at the top. I always thought it was debt reduction.
Yes. And Linda, you know what? Three years from now, if you come back and say, you know what, in three years, you guys never applied a single dime of that pilot money to debt reduction, I would be right there with you, saying the same thing, right? But give it a chance. May 1st was the first pilot money, right? To, to come and tax, when we brought taxes at zero? This has been a dream.
What is called the permit money? There's hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been paid in permit money. Where's that alley?
That's built with the surplus.
That's supposed to be.
Plus 50% surplus.
Now, in the bond anticipation notes, which of those are required to, who go to permanent bonding? Don't you, can, and you only got that for 10 years?
I do believe it's after 10 years, Andy. We have to, for 10 years, we have to go to permanent bonding.
I don't know why I was told a while back that it was three years and it had to...
No, three years, just to have to start making payments on your notes.
Okay. On sheet 13, why is the tax assessor salary increasing so much?
We've, we hired, um, I'm sorry?
Well, I shouldn't say.
We, we hired a staff member.
Yeah, that's gonna...
He was here, or you were here when we hired him?
We hired, did we hire another one besides one?
But, but last year was six months, realizes this year's a full 12 months.
Oh, so it isn't really the tax assessor salary?
Well, that's going up.
No, that, that has changed.
Okay. We had a lot of time with the budget, how to reduce the budget, and, and it was decided to take the DPW salaries out of the Rose Fund. Is that no longer being done this year?
It was never decided.
It was never done?
It was never decided.
But it was done.
It was not done.
It's on the Rose Fund, suspended years last year.
I think you misunderstood.
Everything rose.
Right, it's, the, DPW salaries still, and have in the past, still do this year, come out of the Rose Fund.
What's on?
The portion.
The 82 or 87,000, whatever was, because, yeah, it wouldn't come out of it. I...
I thought you were applying that if it wasn't supposed to anymore.
No, I was wondering if it was, or if it still wasn't.
It's still, that's what I said.
Now, getting to the animal control and the animal shelter, that seems to have increased tremendous amount.
Right, we, I don't know, tremendous amount, we, um, converted a part-time ACO to full-time.
That was last year, though, correct?
So now you're realizing the full year salary, that increase from last year, it's something you realized three months ago.
That was a big increase.
Okay, but as you know, if you're very familiar with that department, correct?
Correct.
And you know, you know how it was run with one full-time and two part-time, correct?
Yes.
We lost one part-time to another municipality because they had paid full-time. Would you state on the record that, that the lead person in that department, whom you don't refer to, um, absolutely needs assistance in that department?
I, I don't have privy to much that's going on since it was changed. I was the liaison before we hired, before it was opened up.
You served for three years, I was hoping you would agree that the animal shelter officer absolutely needed...
I know she expressed that. I know she expressed that. But I also remember when we were never going to spend more than $30,000 a year on that.
On the shelter.
On the shelter. What are we paying on the shelter now?
$30,000 a year is what we budget for the shelter.
For the shelter. Okay. Do you have another open public about things that aren't on the budget?
Yes, we'll have an early budget for agenda items, and a late forum.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Could I just ask a question?
Yes.
Based on what Ms. Shortman was asking before, um, and I don't know if this should be like a poll, but what, what exactly is making it difficult to read? Is it glare? Is it the size?
The size. I want to screen to be twice the size. Size.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that...
But where you are, I can see it, but to can't.
Well, we know that, that particular spreadsheet is very... Matt, can you shut the lights off in that box?
Yes, sir.
I want to see if it makes a difference.
If I was back there, it would not, I would not.
I can't, I can't see.
Let me go back to them. That's, that's obvious. I'm just curious.
I can read that.
Want you to try to check.
That's good size. That's good.
That's better. Right, but we all knew that that spreadsheet had so much information on it. Everyone can come closer to.
But to actually, you know...
Matt, can you turn the back on? Thank you so much. No, I, my, my concern is whether some...
Twenty copies.
Right, no, 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 my concern is whether any glare should be applied to the screens or something like that.
No, it's the size.
Yeah, okay, but it can work. Can you all come closer?
And if you intend on using it for planning board presentations, that could be a difficulty for me to be able to...
We'll get that, see if we can...
You can come closer to them.
That wouldn't help.
Hello, you have 17, Breland. Um, I know you just went over the salary at DPW for 2012, 2013, obviously 87,000 were taken out of the, out of the Rose Fund, but I saw that the salary went up 100, over $117,000, so why? Did you hire someone?
There, there, there was a hire, but there is also contractual obligation. That contract expires next year, and again, I'll defer to the treasurer.
Yeah, because what they're reading is basically the overtime from that point. That's what really pushed the way up, it was almost $75,000.
Right, so, so there was a new hire, replacing, uh, employee no longer with us, but actually it was a reduction, but contractual, there, you know, steps, longevity, which is all in the contract that was done before any of our time, and then the overtime, which was substantial.
That's on top of the 87,000?
Yes, right, a lot of that was from the winter.
The winter, it was all from winter, yeah.
Okay, all right, that was question number one, it was a simple one. The other one, and I bring it back to him, I know you spoke about it before about the group health, and I know that I...
Sorry, group health, okay.
Yes, I brought it up to you in the fall, and you said you got everybody a sweetheart deal, they get a $100 deductible. Remember me saying that I've not seen a $100 deductible since 1980? So my question is...
Wait, wait, but let's, I said, "We got anyone a sweetheart deal," which I don't think I would ever use that word.
You did.
Number one. Number two, it's contractual, okay? So the deductibles, the co-pays have to mirror the state health benefits plan, so since any of us, including myself as mayor, we have not negotiated a contract, except for, uh, recently, the white collar contract, um, where we do now have, um, other options for employees, because employees are going to start contributing to health insurance. So we are going to see some relief over time. The governor implemented rules that require some serious contribution from employees now. So we're going to now, when contracts come up, negotiate giving staff members options of higher co-pays, higher deductibles, for a reduction in premium for ourselves, as well as the employee who now has to contribute. So anything that you just stated, that I stated in the past, is contractual. It's not like I could change without a deductible. And I know where you're going, that in the private sector, right, and I have, I have private sector insurance to my staffs. I pay, you know, I pay $3,500 before I see benefit one. But again, what our staff has is our contractual obligations, and I think over time, you'll see some differences because of contributions that staff now has to make to that.
But you're saying that's through the state that it's contractual, that they have those deductibles set in place?
No, it's contractual in the, in our, in our employees' contracts. In other words, in our PBA contract says the type of insurance they have to have. Our blue collar contract states the type of insurance they have to have. And those contracts expire, well, one is this year, one is next year. So this, this governing body has not dealt or negotiated any of those existing contracts to deal with those issues you referred to.
But there are, there are going to be coming up, you said?
Those contracts are coming up, yeah.
When?
Well, the, the PBA's at the end of this year, and the blue collar DPW's at the end of 15.
I, I would just, you know, because I saw that it had gone up, and I heard why, there were some people were getting married or whatever, but I just thought there were some people in town that came before health insurance. You know, and I know when you said they got a $100 deductible, I'm like, how low a premium can go if the deductible went higher?
But just, and again, and I don't disagree with you, but just for the record, our employees, before I was mayor, actually, you could get contributing 1.5% towards health insurance before it was even law. Our employees saw the, the boroughs, you know, reach out for assistance and did begin to pay 1.5%. But now the governor's made that law, so, you know, over time, you know, you're going to have staff members, you know, contributing similar to the private sector. And, and I think if, if you have an employee who makes $100,000, for example, now has to contribute $8,000 to their health insurance, they'd be more apt to want other options, like higher deductibles and co-pays and different RXTs, so that they can reduce the premium to reduce their own out-of-pocket, which will really reduce the borough's obligation. I think we'll see that over a short period of time.
I'm hoping so. I, I am, I mean, for us, I, I think I told you that before, I hadn't seen a $100 deductible since the 80s, and our deductible right now, a single person is 1,500, families 2,500, so it's, it's ridiculous.
And those premiums are still $20,000 a year, I mean, with those coverages. And you, and you state, which, which, you know, I, I told you, I get, we all get, we appreciate, you know, people don't have insurance, they're struggling.
Yes.
But I always go back to, and I, you know, I have a broken record sometimes, and Councilman Yasi pointed out in his presentation, is, is the percentage of your tax bill, okay? If you're paying, if you're paying $10,000 in your taxes, 2,700 is what we control, and, and I always put it this way, for $2,700, a resident is getting police, fire, you know, garbage placing, recycling, bi-weekly, uh, first aid, recreation, all the services you're getting.
That's if you have...
Break it down that way, it's, it's not...
That's if you have an average house.
An average, oh, sure. And if you've got, you've got a half a million dollar home, you're paying $5,000 for those services, yes. Right, but if you have a half a million dollar house, and you're paying $18,000 in taxes, 10 of it is the schools.
I'm not paying half a million, thank God, but, um...
No, you're not, except for that down.
But I, I don't have the average house, so I just, but I, you know, I just brought it up because I, I know that we had that conversation before about, you know, the sweetheart deal of $100 deductible, and that's stuck in my mind, and I'm like going, there's nobody that has that deal anymore, and how much lower, at least our taxes could be if by chance that health insurance deductibles went a little higher, you know?
It would absolutely, it would absolutely save premium.
Yes.
Sure, it has to be negotiated, and we'd get to have a contract in front of us, other than white collar, which we now have options to, to have staff look at, so.
Okay, I'm hoping that happens. Thank you.
And before you say, can I ask you a question? I, I know you're running for the S.H.C., it's, uh, up here to join us, right? Are you happy with this budget?
Not really, no, but I mean, again, only because...
You're not happy with a zero increase?
I'm happy with a zero increase. I'm just wondering if, if, you know, it could be even lower than, you know, the zero increase of the other, other payments and things that we've had to make or that we have to make. And I'm, I'm just besieged with taxes right now myself. I don't have the average house. I've got a slightly larger house, so taxes are really killing me, but also, I brought the health insurance because I know, and I speak to some people, there's people that can't afford health insurance, period. And then just to remember my conversation with him in the fall, that you guys have a sweetheart deal of $100 deductible, I'm like, oh, really?
I want to just clarify, there's no way this mayor said, "I got our staff a sweetheart deal and got them..."
They did.
No, 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 no.
They did.
There's absolutely no way. Absolutely no way. If I said anything to, along those lines, it's that, not that the mayor got them that deal, it's that that deal exists, and it's a pretty good deal compared to the private sector.
Okay, you, you did say sweetheart deal, but maybe you would say you got it, but you said...
Well, there's a big difference.
But I, but I'm not really sure. I mean, I, I didn't take notes, I don't have a tape recorder, but I remember coming over saying that you get sweetheart deal, I'm like, come on.
Does our, does our staff have absolutely great coverage in a sweetheart deal? Yeah, it's negotiated, absolutely. Do they deserve it? Yeah. Should, over time, it become more like the private sector? Yeah, and I think what'll drive that is now the state laws that require them contributing, which will, you know, have an employee consider wanting those options to have a little more out-of-pocket, to reduce their own out-of-pocket on premium, for the first time ever. But on the health insurance issue, it's not something we've ignored. We, last year, moved out of the state health plan to the, to a HIF, to a health insurance fund, with members of many municipalities, reduced our premium, not by great numbers, but we locked our premium in for all of this year. And so that netted about a $100,000 reduction, a $120,000 reduction in premium, because the state health plan, where we were, went up, what, 8.5%, 9% this year? We didn't see that, because we locked in our rate at a reduction, at about 20 grand less than the state health was. So, you know, we, we were very conscious of that, the, the expense, and, you know, we've done something about it, and...
Mr. Mayor, I, I was thinking that was what you were referring to, is a sweetheart deal, was how we blocked that in.
Again, you know...
I know he said sweetheart deal.
Right, I was wondering, I mean, that was the only sweetheart deal I could remember of our insurance changing.
But I mean, I'm like, oh, do you have a hundred dollar deductible? I'm like, whoa, I haven't seen that in a while.
Yeah, that is a sweetheart deal.
It is sweetheart deal.
And a follow-up question to what I was asking before. You served on the Board of Ed for how many years?
Hmm, three plus, four years, four years.
Did you ever bring in our taxes at zero, the portion that you controlled?
It's been many years ago, Ray. I can't tell you whether I did that or not.
Well, I can tell you, it's never come into your Board of Ed has gone up year after year after year.
But back then, they were-
Did you ever?
They were, can you wait a minute? I have a table here. They were able to vote at that point, the townspeople were able to vote back then. It was not the same gig anymore. They get an automatic two percent if they want it.
Right, but at that time, you put the budget in front of the residents to vote on it.
Yeah.
How was the health benefits? Did you ever cut those?
Yes, I did while I was on there, yes, I did. And I got them to go back to-
It's hurting us a lot.
Oh, no, trust me, I, that's been, that's been one of my bones to pick on. But I'm not on the Board of Ed.
Just want to make sure I emphasize that we control this.
I know what you-
I just had one of them.
Our job was done completed, as is showing up there. I'm getting a lot of a lot less than someone before me sitting here.
But I was saying to get that down. I had them negotiated, instead of a hundred dollar deductible, which they had, I brought it to two hundred fifty dollar deductible. So yes, I did do that. And when I left, I brought that down.
The overall expense went up, our overall taxes went up, our overall benefits has gone up all the time.
And if I may ask, and again, I'm just curious, did you attend the Board of Ed public hearings on their budget this year and express concern about their increases and how much it's costing you when your taxes are so absorbing it?
When I was on vacation.
No, just curious.
Sorry.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir. Just may I address for the Director Paul? How are you?
Paul Plon and Anna Rose Porter, Bloomingdale. This is a good one, on page seventeen. Maybe that spreadsheet you had before, which you kind of talked about, I think it showed the increase on appropriations and if that's still available. We can look at the spreadsheet in the page seventeen as well. So I think you added insurance and a couple of other things, DPW higher and the taxes as your support. And it looks like it's about an eight percent increase from thirteen to fourteen, right? And I'm looking at a line item on page seventeen, the last one before B, before contingency. All right, you have six million, one thirty-five last year to six twenty?
The answer didn't tap, yep.
Yeah, right. I guess you can grab almost any line. So the gap there is something like forty-eighty-five thousand dollars. And last year, I guess we were fortunate enough to come to two hundred and fifteen thousand under the budget we had planned. So I guess that, if you look at it from a percentage perspective, it's an eight percent increase on the budget amount. It's actually a twelve percent increase in the amount we spend, right? Is that?
No, the amount that you refer to, I'm unfortunate enough, I'm the last, that's when the eleven months were expenses, which we can't really look at that.
So a little bit of a concern I have, and zero, everybody likes zero better than something positive. But the eight percent, a little bit of a concern long-term is when we take the, this, I imagine this line item here is kind of like our in-house expense, right? It's kind of like our infrastructure cost, right? Where a lot of the surpluses come and go, and grants come and go, and other things like that come and go, and they're not as predictable. In this case, though, we're actually building up our bureaucracy part of the government is now eight percent larger, right? So we got to hope we have all the operating costs. We, these are probably not going to go down unless we-
Which line items are you specifically?
I'm not cumulating, I'm just looking-
What are you looking at in total?
Well, no, he's looking at a partial-
Which line items are used?
Well, you can go to the bottom of the page too.
No, 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 because you, I mean, if you really want to look at it in total expenditure, you have to look at the ten million dollar number, or the six million dollar number. And that number actually, I believe, went down by a few thousand dollars.
Well, the seven million on the bottom of page nineteen is a seven point six versus seven point two. In general, there seems to be a four hundred fifty thousand dollars. I think up to the seven, you had it on your spreadsheet before, maybe a different slide? You had the top lines at seven million something versus seven million something? Not this, you have a different tab that had that?
Yeah, quarter page eleven. That's the amount that you charge over that, so, tax level.
Yeah, I understand that.
That's gone down eighty-eight thousand.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good direction.
That's a good direction. So you're happy with this one?
Happy with that direction.
Well, that's, oh, I have a question on that.
No, it's not a political question.
Sure, you can open up with that, just like-
It's not politics, it's zero.
No, I'm only just observing, and perhaps you can clarify, is that in general, the seven million, you added four hundred fifty thousand dollars to the core operating, day-to-day operation that's kind of probably-
Once again, you're looking at a certain section of all the expenditures, of the appropriations, I mean, the-
Yeah, I'm looking at the operating-
The fact that the revenues have to look at the expenditures, equal the expenditures, and I can't find the expenditure one. The total revenues went from ten point one to ten point two. It's soup to nuts altogether, that's what it went. So that is one percent.
Well, I agree on the overall number, but I'm saying up the seven million number for six.
Well, I'm sure I could find all sorts of groups that would make it negative.
So this is a major subset here.
I know, but unless you look at the whole picture, you can't just yank subsets out and get a good idea of what's going on. But on that, sure, here's the seventeen, total operations including contingent within cap. Six point one thirteen, six point six and fourteen. Okay, we understand the budget, you know, the overall, we're in a good direction. Can you address that one?
What do we look at, page two, eight, nine?
Page nineteen, seventeen.
I'm sorry.
Item B, where-
Anywhere to six point, no comparison.
Okay, was it within the cap, within the cap?
Right, and he's saying, Paul's saying it went up eight percent over last year.
Yeah, because you, wait, if you're taking the portion of the budget and not the other portion, the inside the cap, we had revenues that went up inside the cap, but outside the cap, we had revenues that went down. You understand what I'm saying? So you've got to do both pieces to make it. So yes, within caps went up, but outside the cap would have went down.
All right, so just, I think my observation, I said all the numbers right, is that I just want to express some concern that the general day-to-day operating cost, when you hire people and insurance needs to go up and so forth, that number is unlikely to go down. Pilot programs will get another surge next year, I hope, right? Up to five hundred and some thousand. You might get more grants next year, you can get more surplus or less. Those kind of fluctuate, and you can't totally control them. But, you know, the thing I think we have to be diligent, vigilant with is that the core operating expense actually went up. Thankfully, we had other offsets that kind of kept everything flat. We have to be mindful also that the, this, the six million category-
I'm not sure you're, that's quite the correct interpretation of what the treasurer was saying. It sounded to me like we took things that were-
That is incorrect, inside the cap, there are-
Right, but we basically took things out, we took the expenditures that were outside the cap and brought them into cap, essentially is what you're saying as a total sum, not necessarily as individual items.
Even outside the cap, okay? This is the inside the cap, but outside the cap, you'd have to look at more, that sort of things that are outside the cap that have gone down.
Right.
Which would was that, what has gone up?
But a portion, but just whatever, Paul, a portion of the increase. For example, we have, we have two officers retiring, one-
One, right, right.
Two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks.
And one by the end of the year, and a dispatcher retiring in two weeks. And obviously, those positions have to be replaced by lesser, you know, much less salary.
The junior's low.
Also, inside the cap, we also had to put money inside the cap to pay their return.
Right, right, so, that was a rose company, so. So not only did we, what this governing body did actually is hire two, maybe some of them, currently in law. Knowing we had officers retiring, rather than waiting until they're retired and then hiring, just lose too much time. You want them to go, you already run, because the government's safety is always. So we hired two officers last year, right, at the beginning, in middle of last year. So last year, we only realized a portion of their salary. This year, we're realizing full salary, full health insurance for two new officers. So that number in fifteen is likely to be reduced well in excess of a hundred eighty thousand dollars because of reduction payroll by retiring individuals. And that this number is up so much because you recur to those expenses without seeing the reduction because you still have people on staff, and to the treasurer's point, at our last meeting, when we accepted the exit agreement supporting these retiring individuals, we stated on the record their buyouts for a new sick time. That had to be budgeted, and will, for a period, actually, and there's substantial numbers. So, yeah, it's all part of the-
Okay, all right, so Paul, so I think, I hear that. So there's things that move around, but in general, obviously, we want to keep our operating costs in line because you can't always depend on surpluses and other things to soften that. So just an observation.
Can I ask you a question again, just because I just want to make sure you know the history? Our surplus was in excess of nine hundred thousand this year. And I'll defer to the treasurer. What was our average surplus in the last two years?
Well, one year we came in at a deficit, which we overspent our budget. We had a reasonable next year budget. And I think the last year, I think our, our, um, our surplus, which we restricted to three hundred eighty thousand, that's what we had, was three hundred fifty thousand.
So, yeah, well, I'd say we're, we built that, which we've achieved.
Yeah.
And just to answer your question, the four hundred thousand roughly, right? About hundred fifty of it was the winter, we had, like, we hired four people, that's about two hundred of it, and then health insurance and things of that sort. It's kind of, you can quickly add up to the number that you see.
Well, we'd have a winter, we'd have a tax deduction.
It's very complex, especially when it comes to a two percent cap calculation and all of that. We're allowed to only increase things by two percent. So the total, I can assure you, it's gone down, the portion that we paid, right? And it's going to go down, but you're seeing, this number to six, if, um, up, there's some contractual raises.
Right.
That's going to happen, right? That's going to offset some of that charity wage should move in the right correction as long as we won't have a, I think, in a safe type of way.
Sure.
It's have, it's all, you know, I mean, obviously, the citizens always complain about taxes, but the first thing they complain about, right? So part of it, though, hopefully, over time, I think a noble goal is actually to lower it, to, you know, to, if we can, of course, and where S U S taxes always go up. But hopefully, we can break, you know, challenges to break that paradigm.
We need revenue to do that.
Sure.
I'll assure you, expenses are a problem.
That's right. One lightweight question for Ray here, if you'd like. The other expenses for the mayor and council, the expense account?
Yeah.
It was about twenty-five hundred dollars a couple of years ago, now it's seven thousand. Is that for conventions, is that more, uh?
Yeah, this, this-
Almost a tripling of your expenses.
This body is doing more education, going to more classes than any other council before now. And that's, that's a reason behind it.
Doctor, the only one is the, 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 you mentioned that is a benefit. But what often, you're doing, you know, budgeting trade seminars, the daily seminars, the dating biology, you know, for those. Well, some of those wind up giving us cost reductions.
Well, one gives us, you know, insurance.
Right, but you wouldn't see that, you know, it kind of balances itself out in a different line item.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else wishing to speak? Linda, Linda first, please, sing. Oh, Linda first.
Okay, on page ten, oh, sheet ten, sorry. How come you only received thirteen thousand in R A R this year, or two thousand thirteen?
The contract, I don't have the contract in front of me, is thirty thousand, thirty-three, twenty-eight thousand and change. Which are, things are being made into the, into the new year. We're working with vendors in Florida, to the borough, and we had some financial difficulties. And we're willing to work with it, but we'll be home.
On fifteen A. I know you said, sorry, that the salaries, the wages for the boroughs' care maintenance, I guess it went up to four hundred fifty thousand was paid last year? I don't remember, I guess, I guess storms, I just wanted to get it back to the law. But how many storms occurred from January on?
Both of them, I don't, I can get you the breakdown.
And it was bigger ones that-
Whatever, whatever was thirteen was paid after thirteen, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, whatever.
Because, because you increased it from thirteen to fourteen by a hundred thousand.
Well, seventy-five thousand was just, um, the store, the overtime just was-
Right, overtime, the salt, we were wet on.
That, that's just salaries.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, seventy-five thousand was, uh-
Plus I have contractual, I have to, and I also put in overtime for, because I don't know if that happened, I don't remember. We had a, we went to a quick, yeah, no, I don't want to do like that again.
Okay, um, the animal shelter salaries and other expenses. That's forty-three thousand this year in the budget.
The total has gone up, the total-
But we're not supposed, we're only supposed to be giving the thirty thousand. That was what was stated.
Yeah, that was going to be for private, I mean, but now we're running it, I mean-
But that, but, well, I mean, John even said in the paper-
It's the police of the borough that are doing the sheltering.
But it was supposed to be capped at thirty thousand. As you said in the paper, it's been capped at thirty thousand.
Yes.
Right, and what year was that, I'm just curious.
Um, last, it's the last, um, thirty-sixth year.
When this deal, when Ross took it over, it was two thousand eleven.
Right, yes, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
No, eleven, eleven they walked out.
It was passed on December thirty-one, two thousand and eleven.
Right, so twelve, twelve thirteen, so two years you ran at thirty.
So it depends on your day.
Right. Now, I'm just curious, do you think your budget, everything was still in your tier?
Well, that's what I was supposed to be doing.
I definitely, you know.
I, I, I would have, I, I thought about that.
I took one nod to that.
Uh, let's see, shelter.
But our shared service is still young, like how they exist for our E C O, I'm most set that part of the budget.
And do you worry about getting another, um, not-for-profit any, to, to the animal shelter?
No, at this time, you don't.
Okay, um, there's a stipulation of a settlement. What is that settlement for, on sheet ten? It's around the better of this. That's forty-two thousand.
Yeah, I think, yes.
Oh, a floor, a down one, or?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Was that the entire, I thought it was more than that.
No, it was judged, and the judge, it was for more than the appeal that it reduced to that amount. There's a second appeal, it's called order three hundred thousand dollars, that appeal down.
That had gone down to forty-two thousand?
Hundred twenty, that had gone down to forty, that was about two thousand. Seven, eight, nine-ish, no, it's a mid. There was a second one, because there was non-compliance all these years.
Right.
It was three hundred thousand, which is an appeal. So we'll see what that's used to, and then, not even, you know, it's just, it's not money I can go just to get an occupancy, you know, it's a, it would be nice, you know, occupancy would be nice. Yeah, talk about the money stuff. Don't want to make it seem-
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Linda, before you go, I have to ask you the same question. Are you happy with this budget? Are you happy with it all?
No.
Not happy with it?
I don't like the way you did it. I don't like the fact that, the way I would have done it is I would have taken the total amount of revenue that we have, not considering have a pilot program, and then use that as, take it off. Because you were really above cap.
But, but Linda, you sat up here for six years, did you ever bring in a-
You're above cap if you don't consider, if you don't consider the pilot program. And then if you would have done, used the pilot program-
You would have rejected the pilot program. You would have rejected the pilot program.
I'm not debating the pilot program now. I mean, that debate, that's-
Well, it's funny how you debate things at different times, right?
Well, this is not up for debate anymore. So why debates up there, it's not up for debate.
But you're debating how you're using it now.
Because you, I have a work to say-
You weren't for it, and the revenue that's coming-
Because it's important specifically, it's up for debate.
Bringing taxes at zero, now, now you're unhappy about the way they're funded.
Yeah, because I, I expected it to be followed, the way everyone said it was going to be done, and it wasn't. And we'd have just taken, and reduced the taxes.
Give it time, you told me. But in general, you sat up here for six years, you've never brought taxes in at zero. This is the first year in many years we're bringing in taxes at zero.
Well, because I sat here with all the Democrats every year, except for me being the only Republican, being the only Republican, and every year I had to vote against the budget, because they wouldn't do anything that I asked.
I'm just pointing...
So, no, you're pointing, that's not...
I'm just pointing out, Dad.
That's ridiculous.
You know what? If you're not happy with this budget, I don't know what's going to happen.
Well, you, well, you do what you say you're going to do.
Okay, right.
And that was to reduce, use the pilot program to reduce taxes, and you're not doing that. You've already below, you've used that to reduce, no, so they can't, oh, they can't.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm talking about the future, not taxes. Um, anyone else wishing?
Yes.
State name and address for record.
Linda Short, Linda Short. Having been on the council, having negotiated a, a contract, this is for Ray, you need to go back and look at the great work the Bloomingdale Board of Education did in negotiating salaries. In 1995, they eliminated all the sick pay, uh, except they put a cap on it. You and I read in the paper today that a police chief retires, he gets $170,000, and he gets every dollar. They capped that, they, they did so much, and the reason I was shocked about it was because the town never did it. They just gave out these contracts, probably before you and I were here. But, uh, no, the board of ed did their job. The problem is, the board of ed is huge in numbers of employees and salaries, but I, I think that they're, they did an absolutely great job in negotiating salaries. I think the town should have been there in 1995 and taken away some of those, uh, what did you call it, sweetheart?
Sweetheart deals.
Sweetheart deals. Anyway, I just, I just have to tell you that, for the board of ed...
I know, do they have binding arbitration?
Yes.
No.
No, they don't.
Yes, they do.
PPA is the only ones that have binding arbitration. That means the arbitrator tells us what they have to give.
The Board of Education does not have binding arbitration.
I do think they do.
No, it can go, it can go through several stages, but at no stage does it actually reach a point that is binding. It's, I think it's, I think it's crazy that...
However it works, both sides came to a reasonable agreement.
Yeah, I know, and we've always come to an agreement here in town, but...
I don't, maybe it never really went to arbitration.
Exactly, I mean, I've, I've heard of, I've heard of board of eds that are going to, no, they've gone to arbitrate, but there are some board of eds that have gone to six, seven, eight years' worth of negotiation.
That's what I know, that's what I'm saying. We're not supposed to be talking about that.
Do we have a, a reserve from the pilot program for the board of ed? That it says in the, in the paper that there would be a fund?
Well, that would be our surplus.
Oh, but not a specific fund for the board of ed? If you have no surplus, they wouldn't be able to come and ask for money. Do you know how many students they presently have?
But, but that, if you do that, then you're really going against the ordinance, because the ordinance is saying it's supposed to be for, for tax revenue. So, it's like the mayor said, we'd come out of surplus, otherwise...
But it was also in the ordinance.
But again, again, I'll ask you a question, but Linda, we're going to move on, because we're talking about the municipal budget.
Effectuated dedication of funding from these redeveloped...
Talking about municipal budget. Okay, you asked, your question was how many students?
Yes.
Last count, I believe, was 12, seven of which were already Bloomingdale members, but that's not, has nothing to do with the budget. So, let's move on.
Oh, I think it had to do with the pilot, which is part of the budget.
It has nothing to do with the municipal, how many students in that, nothing to do with municipal budget.
Oh, okay.
Because it isn't a budgetary item, it's a, it's a...
Thank you for answering it anyway.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Did I ask you a question about the animal control, since it's come up a couple of times?
Yes, you want to close? No, I'm sorry, I can answer for... Um, we are. I'm sorry, councilman, you had a question?
It's been referenced a couple of times about the agreement with $30,000. How exactly was that? Was that a resolution, an ordinance?
I'm sorry.
A $30,000 grant, is that a, a...
No, it was just a policy of the government body, I had...
So, is it a, it's in the policy here?
No, 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 it was, it was not a, a resolution, it was just statements made on the record that, you know, we're going to do it for no more than $30,000. Obviously, closer.
So, it's more of a goal than...
That's actually what you're taking that?
Yeah.
We're going to pay.
Uh, okay, thank you. Um, yeah, anyone who, before I close, you should see, okay. Um, preserving no further applicants to the floor, I'd like to hear the motion to close the hearing. Who makes that motion?
Someone. Second.
And I need a roll call, please. Yes.
Yes, Sandeep.
Yes.
Yost.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to confirm, um, I'll be asking for a motion before you move that for a amendment to municipal budget. Mr. Wader, we need, we need to have public comment on that as well?
No, no, it does not exceed the limits. Okay, not the public comment on this, but I'll, I'll just make a statement, the discussion part's open.
Um, so, I need a resolution, um, 5.11, um, to present this kind of many municipal budget for the year 2014. Who makes that motion?
Someone.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And if you could read the resolution. Just by title.
Borough of Bloomingdale County, saying a resolution to amend the budget.
That's mine. Um, and I need a resolution, who moves, sorry, who moves that resolution for adoption?
Someone.
Second. Any discussion? Um, just to clarify, because the public didn't have the opportunity, doesn't exceed, uh, it's minor amendment. We had, um, revenue not completely realized in '13, that the state did not allow us to anticipate, uh, which someone had mentioned earlier, um, in public comment. Uh, so we couldn't anticipate all that revenue for '14, so we had to make that amendment. Doesn't change zero, doesn't change anything, um, but the vendor, who we have the relationships with, just to, to make a full payment in '13, so the state would let us anticipate all that in '14, so it's minor amendment, which actually, when you met that and, um, reduce, we moved a gasoline line that we have to transfer in November, we do, uh, and actually reduced everything, um, what we're adopting by about $28,000 to their head, so, um, that's no public comment out, and I want you to aware of what that is. Any further discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sandeep.
Yes.
Yost.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Modda.
Yes.
De La Ripa.
Yes.
Costa. Yes.
Thank you, and that resolution is adopted. Now, I need a motion to authorize, request the clerk, uh, to read section two, adopting the resolution of our budget. Um, actually, I don't need a motion for that. Clerk, if you could please, uh, change, if you could please read that resolution.
5.12.
5.12 for the adoption.
Now, I need a clarification, we are meeting...
Right, right, right.
Okay, this is section two, adoption for the year 2014. Um, leave resolved by the government body of the borough, Bloomingdale County, the state, that the budget here for headquarters hereby adopted shall constitute an appropriation confirmed stated in the substantial and headquarters, an authorization of the amounts of, uh, $10,430,419 for this purpose, and there's $185,275 in the sheet, 43 open space, recreation, farm pit, and historic preservation trust fund, and $261,994 in minimum library tax.
Thank you, and who will offer that resolution and rule for its adoption?
Someone.
Second.
Any further discussion, other than, I'd like to thank the committee, Councilman Yost for your hard work, Councilman De La Ripa, Ray, your, your hours putting this together in public, you can available online, especially Sherry, a treasurer, for her knowledge of the borough, how it functions, and helping us get to, to the end. And Andy, thank you for being here tonight in your firm, for your guidance as well. Um, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Yost.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Modda.
Yes.
De La Ripa.
Yes.
Costa. Yes, Dodger.
Yes, resolution is approved, 2014 budget is adopted, we will take a quiet recess. 856, we have a... There are a couple of non-agenda items, um, that this public wishes to speak to. Um, the first is, uh, I'm going to be presenting a proposal, uh, which is funded capital for a flood, uh, mitigate flood study in the, um, Roy Abtrall Street area I spoke about last meeting, where, uh, the current, the current inaccuracies on the FEMA flood maps resulting in, uh, 70-plus homes, um, required to have flood insurance, and, uh, do you not think, uh, that that is necessary, and then FEMA has acknowledged you have received it, and, uh, there is no intention of re-studying it? Um, the good news is, I had said at the last meeting, the plan would be to, to cost homeowners $10,000 to do a letter of map revision, where we could do it, um, and probably end up assessing the homeowners $800 each, of 50, 60 grand to do it. The good news is, the, um, the hydraulic engineer that I'm going to ask to authorize this proposal, the amount of $3,100, um, was informed by DEP that they are taking it upon themselves to do Bloomingdale floodplain study this summer. And we, I'm going to ask for authorization of $3,100, that would hire an old engineering to, you know, spokesperson, to clarify those inaccuracies, to make sure the mapping is completed, it is correct, and 70 of our homeowners will no longer have to carry flood insurance. Due to the accuracy of maps, it's huge. The savings, the savings is, uh, well, well in excess of, uh, we'll take an average of $2,000 premium, times 70 homes, um, and that would be on the borough of $3,100. Chances are, and the engineer's very confident, that we will not have to do the long, long process, 60,000 process at all. And if we fail, then we can look at doing that, again, as an assessment program down the road. Um, so I'm going to, not agenda, it's authorizing that proposal. The second is to authorize June 18th, a Wednesday, a public meeting to invite those residents in, and our engineer that we're authorizing will be present. And I want to make a public meeting so government body members can pretend that a quorum has been advertised. It's, it would be Wednesday, June 18th, at 7:00 PM, and that'd be an authorization I'll be asking for as a non-agenda item. Those are the two items I have, um, this evening. So, with that said, I need a motion to open early public comment. Who will?
I do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to the agenda item, please go on, update your name and guess for Ray.
I need to have like 86 Van Dan, um, for the bills list.
Yes.
On page one, uh, regarding the planters for $3,100, didn't we get plants last year for $3,100, too?
We added, um, 20, 25 new barrels, some are damaged, some are old, and that includes the cost of soil and planting and, I don't know, added vegetation.
But this was just for the planters themselves?
No, 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 that was, that was, the planters and flowers, everything.
Okay, also, John Barrett, um, cap of gas lines, dryer?
Animal shelter.
Yes, animal shelter.
Animal shelter.
Okay. I know they have dryers, horse baggies. Um, on page three, um, the brooms to the sweeper. I know Pompalakes, they reimburse us for one broom a year, that's part of the contract, and if we're using three brooms, are we, is that, I mean, I don't, I don't look at the bills list every month, so, but how many brooms do we normally get? Do we get more reimbursement? Because I know everybody only gives us, his $12,000 a year.
Right, the only reimbursement is per contract at Pompalakes, one set of brooms, and we, um, you know, so by our own, based on road mileage, I mean, we have 5,000 of a bunch of river dogs, so...
But how much, how many brooms do we go through every year, do you know?
I do not know. If I had a guess, I'd say, uh, two, three sets of, one if you pay for it by us, and one paid by contract by Pompalakes.
On page seven, it's for, for Rio Supply, Inc., 2014 support for 2250.
Rio Supply is the construction software of the construction department.
We have a pedigree ethic going down Rafter Road. FSC, meat protection, $6,000?
That, no, that was mark out for the project.
$6,000 for work?
No, that was where the, where the curb box mark out paid for it at the block.
Oh, okay. Uh, now, trade improvements on Sandalane?
Yes, that was our emergency.
That couldn't be done in-house?
No, it was, we have about 16 failed basins, uh, 12 to 13 will be done in-house, there were some we could not, um, and I believe, uh, Sandalane was declared an emergency, dispatch crews repairing those, there's six in that, that street, and, um, I know there's one car street that has recently failed beyond our ability to repair, and we have received proposals to be at, and then anything that we're doing to ourselves. I don't think you have to be, I want to clarify that emergency.
We may not have to.
Actually, maybe it was real bad.
Um, what trees did we remove that, um, were from, I guess, recreation, were open space? Um, there's, we moved two trees by Superior that came out of the roadside?
There was trees removed along Union Avenue on rural property, so maintenance of open space. We had, uh, four homes that were, you know, really asking for assistance in a tree removal, and, yeah, just like, they're, they're, they're quite, uh, they're damaged, needing, can you hear that?
There were hindrance.
Well, yeah, and a potential problem, only for rural property.
Yeah, um, John Barrett did some work, I guess, on Park Place, Star Lake, and Woodwork?
Park Place was a lateral, uh...
Because this was small, I don't know why this couldn't have been done by us.
Well, licensed plumber for certain types of work.
Okay.
One was a capping of a well, uh, that's a potential litigation, so I don't want to get into that. Uh, what was, it's in Woodwork Park and...
Uh, Star Lake and Park Place.
Star Lake was a, uh, open water line, um, that actually, all winter long, we had a severe ice condition in Catherine, Star Lake.
Okay, you did that well for a while.
Well, you know, we were about to go put a basin in and deal with it, run it down Catherine, and then it turned out there was a water break, uh, next house up, solved it, that water dried up.
Yeah, sign around, I don't think this is quite high to them, a banner for Edge Land Services?
What I've done for clean communities, I've decided to do adopt the roadway program. I'm tired of fighting the litter, Nacupin, Union, and Glenwood. Uh, for the cost of the signs, paid for by Clean Communities, and entitled program through Clean Communities, um, Edge Landscaping will be responsible, or responsible, of litter maintenance on most of the roads.
I thought I saw the signs outside of the road.
Signs are up on Union, the other two, uh, when I got all six signs, they all said Union. So, they were repaired, no charge, say Nacupin, but, well, county is kind of, has cut their slot program severely, so sheriffs just come up on them.
Really?
So, yeah, and then, you know, if you, if you look, you know, I think they're out bucks at Union Avenue, it's good Bloomingdale, when you get to the Horse Farm, Hunt County College, and Stoppich, none of it is atrocious. Uh, I'm working with Monty to have them try to do, their community is a similar program, because that, that, that red fence along that lane drives me nuts, and, and, I'm sure you're going to put on words, you're trying to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else to the agenda item? Actually, I'll allow non-agenda items, I know, Mr. Noah, I had something to do with anyone else.
You will allow non-agenda?
I will, yes, we hope to stay late.
Well, my agenda item is, aren't you glad you put those bills on the line? Anyway, why are we paying?
I am, I am static about it.
Uh, why are we, why is the rent paying interest on a credit card?
Rent would be, the only credit that's been had on Home Depot and Lowe's.
Well, this says recreation.
It was probably, it was probably a bill for a rent you had.
It says credit card interest.
Again, it had to be, you know, we do have a Home Depot card, and Sherry does her best to catch the billing cycle, but occasionally, the borough only pays bills once a month, you might miss a cycle, pay a small amount, or something.
Okay.
Those are the only two credit cards in the borough.
My other, uh, couple of, of non-agenda items were, years ago, we talked about cameras. I can remember using that elevator and immediately feeling very much at risk, especially at night in this, when, there don't seem to be a lot of people around. I talked to Joe Vorell, it was on our budget for the year.
Do you see the new cameras?
Do we have a new camera?
Absolutely. Do you leave us a night, look through the dispatch window, look this way, and you'll see...
Where are the cameras? Um, are they in the elevator?
They're, they looked like those, although those are cameras for the...
Oh, okay, so we did it.
We did.
Okay, that's all you have to tell me. Uh, a couple of meetings ago, when I was here, there was a present, you had presented from somewhere, the idea of, uh, appraising 20% of the town a year?
Yes, that was not my, my plan, that was the statewide tax assessors association, was, did a pilot program in, um, Lawrence, McLaughlin County, Gloucester County, um, where, uh, I think the goal was to try to eliminate the, the need for local assessors, because they, you know, ultimately, will mop up half, and if you need them, but it was to do a phase in, and you would do 20% of the town a year, and, uh, you know, not have to do that big hit every 10 years, whichever...
Yeah, very, about 30.
Well, legally, when you're supposed to do the typical portion, you should do it. That kind of state county, uh, just state county board tax assessors has not moved on That kind of state county, state county board tax assessors has not moved on the program to date.
Well, I think it would be a great idea, because I think I'll be appealing mine forever.
I don't think it's a bad idea, except that the, you know, now the municipality has a budget, fifty grand every year, but it...
It's a big hit when they do have to.
Well, and it was to be inside cap. I argue the, they're gonna do it, that has to be outside cap.
I have watched the sales in town, and I've compared them with ASI. And let me tell you, these houses that I followed are much selling a lot higher than ASI's appraisal everywhere, except where I live, where nobody can sell a house because the taxes are so high.
Well, that's why there's a process, it's a future thing.
Right, but I don't know where they get the numbers from. My other, my last question is, the property that the borough owns on First Street? For years, we have, well, I don't know what's being done, but we have commercial vehicles parked there. And is anybody monitoring, because I'm sure they didn't for many years, the way that property was filled?
Well, again, I, you know, not to keep breaking up the past, but, you know...
Well, nothing happens, that's why you have to take years.
Okay, I'll be kind of that response, but rural property, that is in our recreation, open space inventory. It's a complete waste of time, because it should not be, it should be in our industrial zone, it should be approved there. Firstly, I'm in the process of trying to amend our recreation, open space inventory, to allow that piece to come out of it, sell it to those industrial owners, so that they can park there without a hassle. Am I gonna crack down on these people? No, because these people need to operate their business in our borough, make substantial taxes, and everything that should own this property, and that's my goal.
But that's been for the last two years, is it moving?
I'm breaking the test, he's working with me on getting Green Acres to allow us to amend our recreation, open space inventory. You know, way back then, when the town wanted to save, you know, all these parcels, you have to, you use Green Acres money, you have to, you know, throw other stuff on your inventory, and to show that you're not just, you find something to, to sell something else. And past government bodies threw just parcels such as this on the inventory. It was never purchased with open space money, it was just thrown on inventory, and it's completely incorrect. It needs to be remedied, which is not a easy process, but something we're working on, so that those industrial zone businesses can access that property. So, so are we out there every day putting guy in real love and finding him? No, we're not.
Are we at least watching, so they're not filling in another twirly?
Absolutely. Matter of fact, we, we were, we received a camera system donated from the Board of Education. And our goal is to camera DPW yard and the back of the senior center for monitoring, to get sure points for people dumping in just to fill.
And do we, since there are buses and trucks and all kinds of things happening back there, do we, does the borough have any liability if there's a problem there?
I would imagine the answer is yes, until we own it, but that's a great reason why we shouldn't own it.
Yeah, but we do own it.
But not for long.
We couldn't make them a tenant? Oh, not for long. How long?
We've been working on this for two years.
Yes.
So, I can't do time ray marks, it was up to me with it.
But you don't feel that we should have a contract so that they're at least leasing it and they're responsible?
Open space inventory, I can't, I can't.
You can't lease it, you can't do anything with it. So, anybody can go back there and park?
Again, it's those people who are running a business and paying building, substantial taxes, and need that area to survive, for the tenants to be there, for the occupants to be there.
And they are under contract purchase, it's not as if they don't want.
Well, they are.
Oh, yeah. It was actually, the day of closing, that title picked up, it was in our open space inventory.
And when something's on the rossy, the open space inventory, in order to get it off, either you try to get an exception, where you can just say that this really shouldn't have been on here in this case, or it's like a five to one ratio, and they can land, they get fine, it's not on the rossy, and it has to get a poop out of State House. So, we're trying to get that exception, none, we've actually met with the representative, Dave Smith, of the DEP on two occasions. And he's trying to help us, and he's trying to help us get this through.
We have to do an exception, because one, it should not be, it's in the smackdown of our industrial zone. Number one, and number two, I will not find five to one, if we can't afford to put anything else on the actual.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to an agenda, or non-agenda, you can choose.
Frank O'Reilly, Twenty One First Street. First, I'd like to speak as a citizen, and I'd like to congratulate the mayor and council for bringing in a budget with zero tax increase, especially absent the winter that we had. I think that's a pretty amazing thing. Now, I'm going to speak as the chair president of the Environmental Commission about Sustainable New Jersey. The Environmental Commission has discussed Sustainable New Jersey in Atlanta many times. First, what is Sustainable New Jersey? Well, from, from their website, Sustainable New Jersey is a certification program, and I'll be quick, this is one. Sustainable New Jersey is a certification program for municipalities in New Jersey that want to grow green, say, money to take steps to sustain the quality of life over the long term. Launched in 2009, we are a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that provides tools, training, and financial incentives to support, and we work communities as they pursue sustainability programs. Benefits: Silver, Bronze Star, Prestige, Priority Access to Some Grant Programs, Eligible to Apply for Sustainable Jersey Small Grants Programs. Okay, and I, this is, I copy from the website. Also on the website is Sustainable, Sustainable New Jersey Corporate Sponsors, one of which is Walmart, and the other one of many is South Jersey Gas. Now, as I said, the BEC has, has looked at Sustainable New Jersey many times. And their conclusions are as follows. Sustainable New Jersey is Christie, is the Christie administration's application of state government's responsibility to promote, enforce, and sustain environmental regulations. A sustainable business promotional effort is part of a broader agenda to gut the traditional DEP enforcement paradigm, and replace it with a voluntary, privatized corporate model, where the DEP provides compliance assistance and incentives, CARIS, and retires the stake. Sustainable New Jersey has resulted in dismantling of local delegation, dismantling or local delegation of the following key state DEP regulatory programs, and substitution of voluntary local partnerships, partnership efforts, for one-size-fits-all, top-down command and control. Some of the programs are global warming planning and mitigation, climate change adaptation, environmental justice, public trust, guaranteeing the public access to repairing lands, watershed and water quality management planning, Barnacut Bay Clean Water Act. Scarcely DEP enforcement resources are being diverted from traditional compliance and enforcement functions to promote corporate stewardship, stewardships, and sustainable business. This could be the reason why DEP enforcement performance is at a record low. As reported by Todd Bates of the Asbury Park Press, proposed fines covering seven major DEP programs, including air and water quality and land use, plunged from thirty-one point six million in fiscal year two thousand and seven to nine point one million in fiscal two thousand and eleven. That's the lowest figure since at least two thousand and two, in about half the ten-year average. The collection of fines is down as well, dropping to seven point five million in fiscal two thousand and eleven, the lowest figure since two thousand and six. Also, the number of enforcement inspectors has dropped by about twenty percent over the past five years, making it more difficult to catch polluters in the first place. At the same time, the DEP has dramatically increased the number of settlements it has agreed, agreed to, allowing polluters to get off with relatively small fines. These settlements, the environmental equivalent of a plea bargain, allow violators to pay far less in fines. The sustainable business promotional effort is a part of a broader agenda to gut the traditional DEP enforcement program, and replace it with a voluntary, privatized corporate model, where DEP provides compliance assistance and incentives, CARIS, and retires the stake. So, I'm going to give you two examples of Sustainable New Jersey Corporate Sponsors. First one that comes from, that they promote on our website is Walmart, which invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in Sustainable New Jersey. Walmart is the pinnacle of an unsustainable global corporate enterprise that destroys local downtown merchants and economies, and exploits labor. My second example is South Jersey Gas Company. South Jersey Gas Company was listed as Sustainable New Jersey sponsor. This company received approval for a hundred million dollar, twenty-two mile pipeline through the pipelines, Pinesland National Reserve, in clear violation of the Comprehensive Management Plan, to deliver fracked gas to repower a fifty-year-old power plant in Great Egg Bay, which needs a four-hundred-million upgrade, dollar upgrade, and whose cooling system impacts the ecosystem of the bay. Sustainable New Jersey deployed their green team to promote this project in an October twenty-eight leadership forum at Stockton State College, and received Pinesland's commission approval for the project. As I mentioned earlier, Sustainable New Jersey is the application of the state government's responsibility to promote, enforce, and sustain environmental regulations, while at the same time pushing this responsibility onto local government and promoting corporate stewardship, stewardship through its sustainable business model, which is akin, in many cases, to the fox guard in the hen house. Having said all this, the Bloomingdale, the Bloomingdale BEC, let's see. Okay, so having, having said all this, the BEC is in favor of going forward with Sustainable New Jersey certification. Play the game, get certified, get the gold star, and be able to get some grants, okay? All right, I have, I have some additional information, but it's really not breaking. So, the end result of this is, the BEC is in favor of going, going for the Sustainable New Jersey certification. The program itself is terrible, and the state is abdicating its power in order to do regulation. I just wanted you to be aware.
No, and I appreciate that. I guess in the first order, if I just want to be, probably remove you from the green team, not kidding.
No, you have to, you have to have a member from the, from the Urban Administration, and nobody else wants to be on. So, I'm stuck.
And I appreciate what you said, and I don't disagree with a lot of what you said, and, you know, it sounds Big Brother-ish, is what you were pointing out.
Oh, absolutely.
And, but I assure you that, you know, we're, one, we're not drinking the Kool-Aid, and two, you know, our involvement isn't going to, to change things like the Pinesland gas line and the like.
Understood.
Purely, purely a selfish reason for the borough's involvement, and that is to, you know, get, get various levels of bronze, et cetera, because it absolutely does help you in the grant process, and not playing the game. Particularly, we've been trying for years for grants for the safe streets to school funding, and we've had no success. And there's a few things that help you gain success. One of them is Sustainable New Jersey. Another is various, you know, studies on school walkers and, and, and school bikers, and things where, where there's a company, a nonprofit company, again, similar, that can turn you off, based on what they do, transoptions. They come into your schools and educate, you know, the kids on the healthiness and walking off. These are things I want to bring in, just to bring the dollars, and that's where we're coming from.
Understood. That's why the BEC is backing, getting the Sustainable New Jersey certification. However, the program is the core, and we just wanted to make you aware.
No, and I appreciate that, and, you know, we kind of, we inherited this, it was before even your time, where, you know, the town dabbled in it. It's a lot of work, man, I mean, it's a ton of working to get, as Councilwoman Hudson counted, I put it in her lap, and she's great with it. Without, a lot of what we've done already in place gets us from level, we're trying to get that line to deadline, you know, we're gonna go.
It's gonna be a struggle.
Right.
It's a struggle to get the line to deadline.
But things like having your national resource inventory, open space plan, all things we already have, gets you there. Are we gonna be on that? I don't know.
I think we should, I really think we should, because the one thing that Sustainable New Jersey also does, is it gives, it really wants the towns to become more green. And there are definite areas that Bloomingdale can become more green than we already are. And from very small things to very large things. And my feeling is, we take it one step at a time, and one little piece at a time, and some of the suggestions that Sustainable is making can make us a more green town. And I also like the idea of that part of the sustainable certification.
No doubt. I just wanted you to see the beginning.
No, no, we're not having a conversation. The other part that was, it was good education for all of us to gain some of the things was, let's say there's fifty things to achieve, and you add twenty of fifty, and they all have points there. Some of them are just things that bring, bring good management, good practice to the borough, like driver's training. Our, you know, if I can improve driver's training on our police department, we do a lot of it already, but there's things like that where, if we weren't doing that, we'd, wow, let's do this, let's bring this to the borough. Helping is there. You can't argue that's good for the borough, the driver's training for DPW, driver's training for anyone who drives a thorough people. You know, things, things like that.
Sure.
Safety programs, audit energies.
Recycling.
Energy audits, excuse me, recycling issues, obviously we do, but, you know, they're like PCG audit, or, 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 so audits, we can, we can tap as a result. There's boroughs access in the past, we do in our lighting systems, recharge kind of thing. So, those are the angles where we're showing, you know, but I understand entirely what you're saying.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing, yes, sir.
Rick Marino, Forty One Sunset Road, Bloomingdale. Evening, Castle Mayor, how are you?
All right, how are you?
Uh, I'll go right to the point. Let's ban gas blowers. Take the votes. Gas blowers, yes, uh, gas leaf blowers.
Yeah, leaf blowers?
Leaf blowers. Oh, so we're good, we're good? Then we'll just, let's just take it to a...
I love my leaf blower.
All right. Well, then, let's make sure they're falling into line with our ordinance. I had in front of me an ordinance, I was here for that last year when we did that ordinance.
Noise ordinance?
And I'm fine with it, I think it's a good ordinance. And when I was complaining, when I had the police officers at my house, due to Mother's Day, and my neighbor wanted to blow his grass, there are no leaves, so he was blowing his grass. So, when my neighbor was blowing his grass on Mother's Day, and I said, you know, do you mind, maybe, you know, you could do this after my mom goes back to Connecticut? He puts his headphones back on, went back to blowing. I said, well, I'll call the police in the morning, and they'll come up. And they said, well, you know, we don't have the training, we don't have the way, because in our ordinance, we have a seventy-four decibel max, no matter what. You can't go beyond seventy-four decibels with your machine.
From the, from the point you're hearing this?
Actually, fifty feet, fifty feet from the device. But what the officer pointed out, these guys are great. They said, well, you know, you know, one officer was like, well, I like my lawn, just like him. The other guy was like, yeah, I can see your point. So, and I'm sure if I pulled the town, I'd get something similar. Half of them would say, yeah, I'm with you, the others would say, leave, leave me alone, it's my lawn. But when he blows his roof, because he does it a couple times a week, my neighbors, you know, a couple neighbors are here, they know. When he blows his roof, right before a rainstorm, because he's predicting that maybe there's a leaf or two in the gutters, he's gotta get it out, it blows right into my house, and he's got, and he's told me, I'm eighty-four years old, I gotta have this high-power blower. And he's got this machine that you wouldn't believe, and it blows into my house. But the officer said, listen, we don't have the training to measure it. I said, listen, I'll measure it, you know, you tell me what device. So, we went back in his car, and he said, well, there's this Rutgers program, you gotta take this Rutgers program. And he said, well, we don't have that, we didn't, we didn't take that training. So, what I have here tonight, you know, I would just go right to say, let's just ban the glass mowers, but you're not up for that. So, what I would suggest is that we have at least a couple of officers here in town with this training, so that in the event that this person is perhaps going beyond the legal limit of noise into my home, I can say, well, you know, why don't we come on by, and we'll measure it. And they can say, well, we have that training, we can measure, and we'll be glad to come by.
I believe the enforcement though is done by the Board of Health, would just have that training and the decibel measuring devices. This is discussion.
That is, that is correct.
The training can be done by anybody. I literally can go myself.
The code is by the Board of Health. So, what the PD should be doing when they get a complaint is calling our Board of Health, who is subcontractor with the Quanta, which will come out and enforce it. And we have our own health, I don't know if Sanferry is the right word, health officer who would respond. So, I'll have the discussion I'll have first thing in the morning, is with our PD that the enforcement mechanism is through the Board of Health, not the PD.
Good, and, but I would still recommend that, and if I might, just leave you with the...
You can absolutely leave it.
This is just what it costs per individual to take the training in Rutgers, and it's offered, and actually, Rutgers is the only place in the country that offers this training currently. And you can, and I think a couple of officers having this training would make, I, I know that maybe we have the mechanism to do it, but maybe it's not really practical to call the Board of Health, maybe it's more practical for a couple of officers to have the training. And then I could just say, hey, can you come on by? Well, he's not on duty, well, maybe this one's on duty, a couple of officers. It's not a prohibited expense.
No, and I, and I, it's not at all. Personally, and I'm just gonna be frank with you, is our Board of Health is, is, we pay, we pay a lot of money to have it, and we'll agree with their Board of Health. It's their, it's their duty to enforce. Firstly, I don't want my police having to be wrapped up in those kind of calls and monitoring decibels.
Understood.
When they should be patrolling the roads and responding to, to more of an emergency type situation. When we have it from enforcement, we didn't have enforcement mechanisms, I'd be...
Well, I'd be curious to, to see what kind of turnaround the Board of Health can offer. If I'm having an issue, can they be buying an hour? Or is it something, well, you'll have to make an appointment, and at that point, they can't really measure it. I, you know, I wonder about that.
Is there certain times that, is he doing?
It's constant, it's constant. It's, it's, it's very unusual.
My neighbor did a dinner behind you all the time, you sit down at the dinner?
No, it's, there's no, there's no rhyme or reason, it's just, it's just, it's a hobby.
You tried, you tried to...
I did, I called the officer about a year ago, and he said, you know, one of the officers, and they were very nice, and I've been working out with them, and I have, I've tried. And as I said, I said, I went on Mother's Day, I said, you know, can you wait a little while? You know, so, so if there is a mechanism, and if it's a mechanism, that means I can expect to see someone with an hour, because I would fully expect if I call, you know, if I hear the sound, and I would give it an hour, he'll still be doing it an hour later. So, I, I, but if it's the next day, then I don't think that's a bad factor.
Right, well, we have, I mean, there is, you know, there are calls, or, or, for any, any sort of Board of Health emergency, so there, there has to be such a response time. Rick, I will talk with the police chief about his thoughts on getting guys certified.
Okay.
I'm gutted, I don't like the idea, because I think police should be doing it.
Good enough.
And I will speak with Pete Corial, who is the head of the Quanta Board of Health, and our health officer, we have two health officers assigned here, to see the turnaround time and how it responds, because I know when we did this ordinance, that's why there would be enforcement mechanisms, because they have the device to measure the decibels for just that, of course.
Right, and this is the last word. I mean, I know why, you know, I live in this town, I know why I moved here. I mean, I wake up Sunday morning, get the birds, it's beautiful, that's why, that's why I'm, you know, here, and that's why we pay our taxes to live in this town. So, you know, we appreciate it, and I understand other people's rights, but as a whole, we want to have your rights to peace.
Well, that's where the rules are placed.
Sure.
With decibel levels, et cetera.
Absolutely. Well, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Yeah, Rick, I have your, I'll, I'll respond to that. Anyone else wishing to speak? Speaker, I want you to close.
So, um...
Second, I can call a favor.
I can.
Okay, and reports, some are listed here for your reading pleasure. And Fred, you have any reports?
Uh, no reports. Good answer. And...
Just Memorial, we're free Monday, line up nine o'clock on the end, yeah?
On our own. Well, there's actually the host, so we'll be shortly...
Well, there's actually the host, so we'll shortly sweeten in Bloomingdale and move on to others. So thank you, James, for organizing that, as you always do. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
You know, I should have went to the discussion, just wanted to point out, you approve the minutes, primarily, we did, there was a resolution protecting military assets.
Five point thirteen and five point four.
Five point thirteen and fourteen, protecting military assets, trying to avoid closures of various spaces that you, deployment of revenue generation in the state of New Jersey. Eagle Scout, congratulations to our resident, Dr. Cole, and a great letter from the library thanking two of our staff members, Al, you know, John DeScapano, for their work in the library. So I wanted to state that, I'm sorry. We already have all three. Oh, right, so Tony and Dawn on the record are recused from November 12th, 2013 minutes. Okay. Second final reading, public ordinance for number four, 2014 demolition of vacant buildings, public notice statement, please.
This ordinance was posted in this building, published in the Herald, who is copying the building publicly. An emotion may be made, and it will be read by time.
Release that motion.
Side of...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ordinance of the borough of Bloomingdale, the county of the state of New Jersey, writing chapter 11, building and housing, section 11-3, unsafe buildings. On the quote of the borough, we will develop a violation of vacant buildings declared to be dangerous.
Thank you. And then the motion open public. Second, call in favor? Uh, who wishes to speak to ordinance four, 2014, please come up, state an address, correct. See, no motion close.
So moved.
Second, call in favor?
Aye.
And who moves to adopt?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeMoto.
Yes.
DeMoto.
Yes.
DeMoto.
Yes.
Sandamire.
Yes.
Yasti.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
And then I need a resolution to approve 2014, five point one six through five point one nine, payment of tax office resolutions, tax title certificates noted on the agenda, who makes that motion?
So moved.
Okay. And also one overpayment. Any further discussion? And roll call, please.
Councilmember DeMoto.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sandamire.
Yes.
Yasti.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMoto.
Yes.
Okay, I need adoption resolution, 2014, five point two O. It's really not at least with Capital Telecom for cell tower. We have an inquiry from Capital Telecom, company interested in looking at the borough for a cell tower at our D P W location. This would entitle, allow me to enter into a non-binding agreement with Capital Telecom to do their testing of the area, and if it's proven to proceed, then because of borough property, we'd have to go up to the public bid for that ability to put a cell tower on there. Again, you know, in the range, you know, of the 20,000-ish range of annual forevermore kind of revenue, what we'd be looking at, but to negotiate. So this is just allowing me to enter into a non-binding agreement, present to do the studies of the area.
Any idea where they want to put it on D P W?
Actually, they reference the Union House, the Union Firehouse, and D P W, so I'll look at both sites. And then I will come back to you with their findings and locations, et cetera, so I don't have that information. And that's what this is about.
Yep.
Okay, so who makes, do you have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second, by Councilman Yasti, any further discussion? And another potential good source of revenue. Roll call.
Sorry. Hudson, yes. Sandamire?
Yes.
Yasti?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
DeMoto?
Yes.
State. Okay. I need a motion for 14, five point two one. This authorizing contract between the city of Patterson and the borough of Bloomingdale for tuberculosis control services, is at the annual cost of $100. And I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Other than approved and recommended by our Board of Health to proceed, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sandamire.
Yes.
Yasti.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMoto.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
DeMoto.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
DeMoto.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
I'm sorry? Okay, Rick, we're introduced by title, Rick. Next, I need a motion to introduce ordinance number...
Nine.
Nine, 2014, amending snow removal and garbage litter enforcement to be done by property maintenance. Our current code is silence on snow removal, and our current code has garbage and litter under the peace department. As I stated a moment ago, on this sound issue, how do our police should be doing these kind of things that ask for amended ordinance so that it becomes property maintenance officer enforcement? We've always been used in the past to do so, so who makes that motion?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Again, since you're the title, one all in favor?
Please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could that be an ordinance, amending ordinance two dash 2004, titled sidebooks, section forty dash two, and twenty dash one snow ice, grass...
Yes. This is accurate. Second final reading?
Uh, two.
Twenty?
Ten.
That's our first meeting. You have, you have done that?
Thank you, well, I'll do each other.
Yes. Seven, yeah. Okay, thank you. I need a motion to appoint Robert Westlake as our new property maintenance officer, who makes that motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yasti.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMoto.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is introduction of ordinance ten, 2014, bond ordinance for various water utility improvement. I'm expecting a detailed discussion, who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second, discussion. This is an introduction, bond ordinance under the utility for 20,75,000 dollars. Again, this is to be for various items, primarily inventory of items that have useful life, obviously, of over 10 years, such as fire hydrants, curb boxes, piping, things that our inventory is fights every year, you know, trying to have the quantities in place needed. This also will be including purchase of a, a large dump truck, which again, will come to you for final load, if the council chooses not to proceed. But my goal here is, right now, we spend in excess of $16,000 a year in trucking, stone and the like from where made breaks and anything job related, that I feel the utility would be in great need of this, and it ultimately may result over time. Again, I'll bring you the details before we do anything. This is introduction by title, and then if you choose not to proceed on the deal, we can cancel that portion of the bond. And the other portion in here is $40,000 for, there's been discussion about moving the sewer and water department to Union Avenue, the building that the borough owns. And the talk has been moving the utility department, combining our construction office to Union Ave. It's a building the borough purchased before any of our time, sitting vacant, with the plan of, you know, just a minor renovation to make it usable, where I feel our utility is growing, where it should be off Boston Street, next to a recreational building, a residential area, and it belongs in our, I'll call it, our public complex in the sense where our fire department, D P W, and this would be, our construction would be the front office, D P W, the sewer would be in the back. And then we'd also gain a real nice storage, which we lack severely in this borough. For James, required, it's a six or four years, seven years, I keep it being Sherry's, construction office, his filing is all over the place, so we need to bring some real structure to that. So in our capital ordinance for the borough, of 700,000, we did reallocate existing debt, I looked out to 40 million, we're here to make this renovation, to make it a usable building. So again, this is what, this is bond ordinance, this work, and there'll be a second final reading, in time for you to decide if you want to move forward, when I bring to you the issue of the trucking, whatever the date. So if you have a motion, I can, or a special, further discussion at this time.
Just for me, I believe a couple other people, when we bring this back, I'd like to see a breakdown, how many hydrants provide?
Yeah.
How many, you know, whatever's in that, and the cost of the...
I'll leave, I already have that. I'll leave that to you tomorrow.
And the other thing with the vehicles, we do have a large dump truck, and I know it's underweight from what they want to be.
Correct. Can't haul.
On cost effective, is it worth just making two trucks versus going out by the new truck? That's the stuff we have to discuss with the department.
Absolutely. I just want to get the funding in place, because it takes time to do so, particularly for the inventory that's needed for the department. A lot of this is going to go towards Raffington Road, you know, various curb boxes and things that were not part of the inspect. I should do an amendment to that this evening for starting utility-related items. Yes, we will do analysis, I'm looking, hey, I'm trucking, and sure, can we run our Mason dump 20 times a day? Yeah, I just don't think it's possible to do that.
Well, that's also picking Mason, we do have a large dump truck down there.
Push holds on a Mason, Mason and a half could hold, it's still... Yeah, we'll have a discussion. We're not voting on the purchase today, we're pressing on the introduction, and again, who put it in front of you, and you guys make the ultimate decision. Okay, so roll call, it's an introduction.
One more.
Okay.
I'm not voting for 120,000, that's got to come out of there. The 120,000, I believe it is necessary, but I think it should come out of the 720 that we reallocated for this year. Also, the 40,000, water department does not have a need to move. Water department, the water utility rates, and the water, they're outrageous, right? And if you continue to bond money and answer, those groups of residents, about 75% in town, to pick up these fees, and the other 25%, I'm not seeing any of it, it's just, it's becoming a tragedy. And to continue to add more, I disagree with it totally, so I will vote for this, but...
You just want to create a discussion.
That, that, the 120 is going to get transferred over, and it should be paid out of the 720 and the 40,000 as well. The full amount should be paid out. If they don't have a need to move.
I can tell you now...
We're forcing it to move.
Okay, I can tell you now, that out of the 720 that was reallocated, was rotating this year, another capital, which you will not have for 120,000 to buy that vehicle this year.
We may have to cut some things, in order to have 720. We may have plans for, to make room for.
And we'll have a discussion. To your point on the utility, at the end, no one can disagree with you, that the rates are high, and, you know, we know why, there's so few users. You know, we're opening all this debt on our capacity, you know, it's a broken record, and there's just so few users, we need to add users, we need to invest in the infrastructure. And, you know, with our plans of growth, and, you know, mirror tracking, all of that, it's all going to help. The reduction, we're going to be saving 180,000, moving to local order, you know, all that's going to help offset any debt we put on, because it's operational needs. You stated, and I'll debate you all day on this one, that the utility does not need a new location.
They don't.
You are, you are incorrect on that statement, and I'll debate you on that, because the, their vehicles, which are grown, should not be in residential area, their inventory should not fit on Austin Street, okay?
And we should buy, if they don't have the room to inventory all this stuff, what are we buying it?
That's the point of moving to Union Ave. They also, they already keep inventory at D P W.
But Union Ave as is, we want to fit it easy, we would have to add something for that, you know, it's a fit.
You'd have, you'd have to add a cold, sorry, a cold shed, a cold barn off the back for their vehicles. And these are the discussions we're going to have.
We disagree, this, yeah.
And we can disagree, and I would enjoy, I look forward to the debate.
One thing with this, I, what I do agree with you, they don't walk on Wall Street. I was a resident down there, my house there, and their trucks are there, the back hill, the trailer, it's all... It would, it would, I would like that.
All right.
They need to be down in the complex. If nothing else, the D P W superintendent, the water superintendent runs out, somebody should be overseeing the other ones, you still have the same general errands as any issues. But they should be in the same complex. Moving van down there makes 100% sense, because we have a building over here where he's in, because we're a park unit, we're the best here. We have records that are upstairs in that building, it's just overflowing. They need to go to a, a place where it's heated, air dish, whatever, break, because that's...
It's everything, yes.
For what we have, we have to work with it on these. That building down there has been sitting vacant since we purchased it, with the eyes of becoming a police station. Let's be honest, it's not going to happen. We can utilize that building, put two departments down there, make it nice, that's what the complex should be. We need to discuss how that's going to be paid for. You're 100% right, but we need to make decisions out of the 720, where that's going, if we're going to cut things, and stay within our needs. So I do agree, they need to get off of Wall Street.
Hey, I'm just putting the front here, putting the funding that came into it to proceed in front here. We will continue having these discussions, and you all's really going to make the decision. The best has to be made, if I think.
Well, if we're introducing this and there's going to be a public hearing on this, shouldn't it be clear that we are not introducing those two sections? I mean, I'd like to take your vote on that. You know, if we're not going to take the one hundred and twenty thousand out of this, why would we have a public hearing that the public come and ask us, were we agree with that? Like, if we should not be taking one twenty, is there a need for that, you know, super truck?
Yeah.
Last couple of years, we've been buying a lot out of the utility, so it was, it's about time we move it into the general fund.
Yeah, you're not, this was coming for you to be introduced. Everybody chooses not to move over on the truck, then you cancel that portion of the debt. Because you have a bond ordinance running that did not be amended and is introduced for the inventory that we need to wrap. And if you choose not to move on the truck, cancel that debt after it's done.
I would go down that. I would amend it.
You should have told me this before.
I did tell you. I did tell you.
This wasn't right here and, again, when it's adopted, if the council chooses after it's adopted, like, like, no, I don't want the votes for a truck, that's not coming for you. Make a motion, cancel that portion of the debt and the bond, be allocated. Cancel, cancel, it'll be allocated, it's canceled. If the government majority chooses not to buy the truck. And it's my job, if I feel, I will honor you differently and if I, if I'm successful, then we move. That's fine too. I need to get this on the books to move forward on the capital, inventory that's needed for the utility.
Is it cheaper to vote this down now? And, and reissue it now?
No, what's your reasons?
Or is it cheaper to go bond, bond this money and then, and then cancel the debt?
There's no, there's no, there's no cost to do that.
There's some fees associated with raising the money.
Right, but you're going to, once you cancel, you're not, you're going to draw about two hundred dollars in, in that. What I need is all time, I need to introduce this. So we have funding in place. What would be the second part of the meeting? Like, you tense, I have the inventory for phase two Raffigan Road.
The one hundred and fifteen thousand for the supplies, so it's mostly for Raffigan Road?
Not mostly. I mean, I have, yeah.
Those are things that were anticipated for the project. I mean, I understand we ran the curb boxes and stuff that were, but not probably a change order we got to do tonight.
Correct.
Hydrants and stuff, we're not doing that either.
No, no, these are throughout town here.
That's fine, but that's, again, that's not in his general budget. He doesn't, last year, he doesn't put a total landline in.
Look, basic, basically, yearly water, basic supply, operating expenses, from, from, from tapping the water unions, tapping sows, to, to clamps, to couplings, et cetera, average of about fifteen thousand dollars. And here is money for the new truck that was purchased last year for, uh, tools, lights, and assorted water wrenches to be on that vehicle. The degreasers included in here for the department. Twenty fire hydrants, wrenches to be replaced, you know, once, once they, that's what needs to be replaced. At a cost of twenty-two hundred, two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Water meters. Again, this, this could someday be a large capital project, but it's raised plenty. You know, you need users or the revenue is tied to without increasing the rates any further. But meters, I mean, our meters, you know, a full blown replacement would be half a million dollars. We're not willing to do that, but in here is, is, you know, forty thousand dollars just to replace meters that don't re, constantly be replaced.
But the meters, you're talking, meters are few thousands?
We don't really, we get money back.
Yeah.
We still need the money to buy that. Okay, right, we still need the money to buy that. Standard meter cost, uh, um, again, a truck, we talked about. Then in here is a compressor, jackhammer. Because again, we're doing the work ourselves right now. We're borrowing jackhammers. Water pump, paving saw. Again, these are the basic inventory items that are being proposed.
Sounds like a lot of equipment for a guy.
It's not equipment. Oh, the equipment? The only thing was compressor, jackhammer, water pump, and saw gun.
Concrete cutting saw.
Right, well, how, how else do they do it? Are they going to borrow or to fill barracks?
Well, fill barracks. My ultimate come down to it, it sounds like we're kind of shy, man, how are we going to, well?
Well, that's a whole nother conversation. But the goal is getting them, you know, the materials they need to, to, you know, do the work.
Well, in my eyes, if, if we're borrowing equipment, we buy it, we don't need that person to borrow from it.
Correct, there are. As you know, there's tiny licensed plumber who can fill barracks. They're on certain, sure. He has a charge for the users, but you get some money you need to put. So again, you have the truck, you have the capital, and you have the renovation for the building. I asked, I'm asking for introduction. You choose to cancel and not move on some of these, they need the inventory to proceed. That's what I'm asking for. And, you know, no disrespect, this was sent, uh, you know, sometime we go through the agenda, so I just, you had a question.
But John, you knew that some of us were told to see this, right? Why would we go even have it to bring it here, to have this discussion to begin with? Why wouldn't we discuss that, knowing what the bond ordinance should read? Because we're going to vote yes or no?
For your government.
Yeah. Because you're saying, go ahead and adopt it and then, but then, adopt it and then cancel it.
If you choose to not buy the vehicle.
Well, I'm going to cancel it now. Let's go do it right the first time and then bring it back. I think the vehicle needs to be purchased and I know where the funding's coming from.
You want utility vehicle funding to come.
It's not a utility vehicle. It's going to be used for snow plowing. It's going to be used for DPW as well. Okay, the same as the one hundred and twenty thousand dollar backhoe that we purchased. That's being used at DPW and for snow route. Right, so it's, it's one hand pushes the other. It's about time we give it.
Again, that's your position on utility, yeah. Which is fine. So, you know, is the motion on table? If you, if you vote it down, then I want a recommendation from, from the committee, somebody, on how you want to reintroduce this. The funding wouldn't be in place till the twentieth. Of June, if you reintroduce on the tenth. I don't even know, I don't have enough time. Probably not. It'll be July, we have one meeting in July. And what will that date be, Jim? Could they, could they introduce a menu in this bond order? We have to vote no introduction and reintroduce. Well, because otherwise.
This wasn't going into the budget.
What do you just?
This is not in the budget.
You do not need deposit money.
Correct. So we don't have, we might need, as far as what.
No, 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 you need a board of commissioners. You think you're going to amend it? All right, let me do this. Let me do this. Right, okay, so here's what, we have motion on the table for two hundred and seventy-five thousand, one twenty vehicle, one fifteen, uh, various, uh, provided purpose installation of not limited to curb boxes, animals, fire hydrants, we all work, materials necessary they're for. And then forty thousand for provided progress purposes, utility building, uh, units. That's the motion on table. So no, I'm going to vote this and if this passes, we, we're done. If this fails, then I'm going to reintroduce without the truck. But if you have supplemental, including the truck, you can.
Yeah, we have four every second.
Well, everybody has to reintroduce it, which has to be do that. Yeah, so my, my main concern is the phase two Raffigan is, especially out of curb boxes.
So that's part of it.
All right, so there's a motion on table. I'm going to ask for a roll call on this introduction spot. As it's.
Antonin Costa.
Yes.
Tom. Delbert.
Yes.
Hudson. No. San Tamar.
No.
Yasty.
No. So, yeah, no feels. Now I would like introduction of, uh, bond ordinance, uh.
Well, still in ten.
Ten, two thousand fourteen. It would be the same. Same ordinance without the one hundred and twenty thousand dollar vehicle purchase.
Right, so it would be amended without that.
For a total amount of one fifty, one fifty-five, including utility inventory and the investment in the Union Ave building. And I ask council to support that and if you choose not to, the building, we cancel the footage.
Mayor, the most appropriate is if this were to move forward, the motion in the, the second was by a member of the government body voted no on the first motion. Because this is really the same ordinance we're bringing back.
Well, they can, they can introduce it.
Doesn't mean you have to vote for it.
Right, yes. All right, so I have the motion doing that, please.
I'm going to make a motion that, um, out of the one fifteen, I'm making numbers up. Because I think that one fifteen was made up. Make it seventy-five thousand and the other two items cross them off. That's my.
Second. So what is your total amount of bond introduced?
Seventy-five thousand.
It's not even enough to do Raffigan Road.
Raffigan Road.
Yeah, Raffigan Road curb boxes. There's, there's sixty plus curb boxes on phase two that have to be.
Why Raffigan Road curb boxes coming out of here when we have the construction?
Because it's utility. The other one's not utility bond.
But it, a hundred thousand hours of construction.
It's a utility. It's not a utility bond. It's not a utility bond, right? The alternate on laterals and all would have provided that, but there was no, there was no movement on that. To your point about increasing, um, how to increase, you know, rates of the debt, and I get that part. Obviously, we make the investment curve. Seventy-five is not enough for this year's inventory, material, and Raffigan. Now, we're doing a change order for phase one. Which also, which is for catch bases and things like, um, curb boxes installed by the contractor amount of forty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
What can we do on that?
Because via my conversation with you and Councilman Yacke, if we have the contractor, we have no choice here. We're in the middle of the project. Our department of two and a half could not have repaired forty curb boxes in the time to keep up with the sidewalk phase and phase one. Knowing that phase two, which we are to possibly award phase two's contract denied. Again, it was just curb sidewalks to pay. There was no utility portion in there. You and I had a discussion that if we were to have the contractor do that, do we do a change order? It would be in excess of twenty-six thousand dollars for him to do all that. When we discussed that we could buy the curb box, our guys can do it, okay? And I'm allowed to, at that point, have our guys do it. We've talked about adjusting their hours, changing their hours from nine P M. to three A M. for higher flush and string time. Do overtime from eight A M. to three P M. to do these curb boxes. They have, they have ten to fourteen days to do these and there would be eight thousand dollars in overtime versus twenty-six thousand by going to contractors to do it. And it's plus the material. Plus the material. Right, which is the need for the bond ordinance, that I only said one thousand is enough to cover the labor to install, the material, and if you read the bond, it says material and labor to install, as well as. Yeah, we have overtime. We can't do the straight time to still flush hydrants.
But we've already passed the budget that has, there's salaries and overtime again.
This can be paid out of the bond ordinance that I want to introduce to cover it. Why, why would you do it in a new way? It's eighteen thousand dollars cheaper than having the contractor do phase two's curb boxes.
Put it in the other bond.
It's not, it's not a utility bond ordinance. What you, this is the point you're missing.
It's the entire street, including all the.
It's not a utility bond ordinance, right? You can't do what you want to do. You couldn't. How we do it?
How much is the material? But there's not eighteen thousand dollars difference. You said that's, that's eighteen thousand, plus material downstairs, so it's not eighteen thousand dollars saved.
No, it is, it is saved. The twenty-six thousand is the cost for the contractor to do it.
It's labor.
It's labor.
Yeah.
Leave it for that curb box.
We can do it, our labor can do it cheaper than have the contractor's labor do it.
Mike, you're going to do a change order tonight. You're going to do a change order tonight in the amount of forty-six thousand dollars, okay? Of that forty-six thousand, again, I don't have the breakdown. Twenty, kind of change on that, it's just the curb boxes in phase one.
Right, I thought you, I thought you supplied the curb boxes with that.
No, we bought. That's, that's part of the change order too. Due to rebuilding of nineteen catch bases, installing benches at catch bases, installing thirty-one curb boxes. And again, curb boxes are coming out here, removing trees, dust up front, all changes to phase one. So in the bond ordinance, is there normal, what they need normal? Fire hydrants for the year, meters for the year, the compressor, the things I mentioned, that have been on the table for years. And money for, um, curb boxes. And whatever else unknowns we found. We found, we just found out that you can't shut the water off from Martha B. Day without killing the whole house to the cold set. So guess what? We're digging that, putting in valves to amend that. So that now we can specifically emerge and shut off one of these waters. So these are the unknowns. You just don't know. So, again, you made a motion and ask if you send that motion and move this ordinance in the amount of one fifty-five, meaning if you're going to, I need the vote. If you wanted to leave the truck, maybe we'll revisit that another day, but.
And it can flush it.
Well, then you're not going to move the departments. Then if you, if, if you don't move the.
We can move the departments. It's just that between our guys and.
No, please, please, there's no way.
Our guys, it takes three years to do it. Between our guys and we have the seven hundred and twenty thousand, right? Between those two, we figure out a way of doing it, right? If not, why not? Adding on to utility users to pay for more.
Cost to an efficient operation of the department.
Efficient, efficient?
Yes.
You don't want to go there.
More efficient than, except for the, true or false? True or false?
If it was more efficient, those curb boxes were being replaced already. We've been talking about it after work for two years.
My statement was more efficient than it used to be. I can't help you that way.
I hear you. It's getting there, but.
That's all, I, I feel that. Okay. Seventy, and again, I don't know where the council wants to go. You've already voted no on the two seventy-five and I appreciate that. I'd ask that you go one fifty-five for the Union Ave building. And if you don't, at the very least, go one fifteen for the material needed to, to operate the department in phase one. Somebody needs to make a motion. There was a motion on table. Was it seconded? Ray motion for seventy-five thousand.
It was seconded.
I think it was seconded.
It was seconded by whom? That's okay. Any further dis, we're in discussion, my apologies. No, we'll have to vote on that.
Well, no, you can ask for that to be amended. If the movement wants to amend it, you could.
Well, Ray made the motion. Ray, were you willing to amend to, uh?
How will we table this, I don't know? We need more time. I was under the impression that all those curb boxes were going to be paid out of there.
I, I correspond to you that that was not the case with the utility bond, unless the contractor does it. And if the contractor does it, it's going to cost us eighteen plus more money than our guys doing it.
But again, we go replace a water line in a street, right? And then we repave that street and we don't come back and say the paving portion should be coming out of the general, right? The utility is for all.
Another screen, dude.
They are doing the road. How come this portion can't be done? Because they're doing inside the road.
It's not the utility bond. That portion should have.
But that's your argument.
It's not, no, it's not my argument. This is direct from finance.
Well, then, every single road that gets paved after utility damage is done, then the general budget should be picking up. The cost of.
Not the damage was caused, the, the cause of a repave was a result of utility problems.
See, there's too many, too many ways of justifying banging the utility users, which is, it's not.
No one's here with the intent of banging the utility users. You check here.
That's what they're doing, yeah.
No, 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 please, please take that statement back. We know that's.
Our rates are the highest probably in the.
Did, did we create that, you and I?
No, but we're not helping it.
Well, okay, so let's do what Rose done in history, go dandy on everything and not make the investment.
I'm not saying that.
That's exactly what.
What we're fixing, uh, uh, we can pass as a council that we're going to allow for curb boxes to come out of that bond. We have that power to make it.
You do not.
Yes, we do.
This is from bond council.
We have the power to make it all want.
You cannot.
Yes, we can.
You would have had to, the bond would have had to be introduced that way.
Well, then, let's cancel this bond and let's go revisit that bond. If we have to do it, let's go do it.
You can't, you can't. You, you, we're doing a change order because there's enough money. Yeah, you're not adding more debt to it. You're doing a change order. You're committing a good fund there.
So you put in there that it's going to include cost of curb boxes.
Right, if I could do that, don't you think it'd be part of the change order? And it would still be paid, by the way, by the utility, if you were able to do that. Bond council has informed me and our finance department, that cannot be done. So we're doing a separate utility bond for those needs.
Then the conversation needs to be added to get them. How is it justified the other way but not the, this way? I don't get.
That's, you know, great, great statement and then for debate, I would argue that the utility project caused the damage to the road. That's the utility paid for. And that's separation. We have a motion on the table by you for seventy-five thousand.
So in this case, the curb boxes are not damaged today.
Because they are.
They're, they're working today.
No, they're not. No.
If we were doing that road, we wouldn't be looking at those curb boxes.
You can't open and close.
My point is, because we are opening it because of the town project, I would be like, now that we have to, we're forced to replace.
No, no, I, I would, I would buy into what you're trying to sell me by saying if, if this project damaged that, then that should come out of current, current expenses, not utility. But it's part of a road paving sidewalk project that has been discovered, utility functions, doesn't operate. It's totally the obligation of utility to pay for that. Why shouldn't, you get general taxes paid for seventy curb boxes that don't work at three seventy?
Let me, let me give you another example. Suppose we had underground electrical wiring and we were doing the paving. Would you expect, yeah, would you expect us to pay for, to replace popular electrics equipment underneath? Because we're paving the road.
We did block the wire.
We did, no.
Because it's, it's a utility.
Why do you own there? That's, we don't own that utility. We don't have.
It doesn't matter whether owners are not.
They, you know, triple the amount of the.
It's still a separate entity.
It's a good analogy. If you do the damage or nothing.
Of course, different.
Don't you can damage it. It's already damaged, right?
To Ray's point is.
Ray's point is we're only doing it because we're doing the project.
Right.
Right, but that's like, that's ridiculous, Dowd.
It's not.
It is true. We didn't damage them. You know what? Besides, okay, besides that, there's a list of forty other ones throughout town we know don't work and that's on the list.
Well, right, that's going to be a part of the inventory and our guys are going to have to start doing it more efficiently.
And they, well, they have to get it.
Mostly, also, they have been going through our.
So I presented to you, you and John, and I said to you, listen, we're going to do this ourselves. We're going to change the hours of the department to go, to go, I mean, did, did you?
For the second, for the second part, right?
Correct, right. There's no way our guys can replace all the curb boxes in phase two and do their day-to-day operations of automating brakes, heater replacements, all the things they do, and flush hydrants, which hasn't begun and has to get done ASAP. There's no way they can do that. Yeah, I, I saw that solution, but, but you can't, you can't fund that, no. Now, you can't encumber that. It's a great idea. You can't encumber it. It's not in the budget. You can't allow a transfer without it in the budget. If you want to put the fire department's budget. Okay, go ahead. So my plan was change the, we have, we have the authority to change by contract the hours of a department. So we changed the utility department's hours from nine P M. to whatever it's six, seven, or P M. is. Three A M., whatever maybe it was.
How much of the one fifteen is to be contracted to?
You make that the straight time with day flush hydrants at night. And you change, and then from eight A M. to three P M., whatever the seven hours is. That's overtime doing these curb boxes. And it's cheaper, substantially cheaper than having the contractor do it. And we have the time if we move now to do it. What's, what's the difference?
Yeah, why we pay the overtime to do it?
Work normal. I wasn't paying overtime to do it. What's the difference?
So we build the cost and put it in the budget. It's more cost, we pay the budget.
Yeah, guys.
All, all, we, we need.
Guys, guys, wait, timeout, timeout. Just, James correspondent shared. If we don't move something tonight, we'll have to cancel the order on curb boxes for phase one. And the ordinance will not be done in time to pay for that. Because phase one is for the labor of the install. Because it's a utility. It's not, you can't pay for the utility items.
It's not going to get done. Bad timing, man. Should have been done better.
I didn't create it.
I'm sorry. My motion is not changing seventy-five thousand.
Could you clarify your apology? I'd like a clarification of your apology. What are you apologizing for? I'd like a clarification of your apology, what are you apologizing for?
I apologize.
You just said I'm sorry.
Sorry, because I interrupted.
Okay, okay, so you're not, you're not sorry that, that you scuttled the discussion of doing this as part of the bond in the first place?
I understand.
We discussed doing a bunch of utility work as part of phase one.
Correct.
And, and you decided, no, we didn't wanna pay all that money. Now you're discovering that maybe we should've paid that money upfront, and now you wanted to retrofit that in. What? What he's, what he's saying, we had, we had discussion about doing the laterals, all these utility related stuff on that, and council, like, there's no way we're spending another million dollars, for the same reasons concerned about expenses, so we didn't do it, but now we're finding, guess what, we should've done it. Well, part of it. Well, because then the alternate bid was curb boxes.
But I, I think-
So it would've been fun, we should've did-
That's two different things.
We should've did it in a job upfront.
Absolutely, right.
Finding out if the curb box worked or not.
Right.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. But if I recall correctly, we discussed that, and we decided we weren't gonna spend any money to figure out whether the curb boxes were working or not. We said we'd open them up at the time and see if they were working, and if we had to fix them, we'd fix them then. It is now, then.
We were gonna send the engineer, he was supposed to build a couple houses and, and check that stuff out.
Do, we know, come on, like, we know the condition, you can, you can use that all day long, you know?
But that's what we asked him to do. Did he do it?
I never got any- You're trying to get one, see what it told you, try and see if it looked at wrong.
Yeah, might've changed my answer, yeah.
But we know that's the case, Mike, we know that's the case.
I didn't know anything about these curb boxes not working. How long did you say that, or did Paul Dorf's intermentals ever say that?
I, based on what we did in the street, I would assume that. Because when I asked, when I asked our engineer, we're, I'm missing, this communication missing here, why didn't we, and he says, he said, Neil, town, I did it, you know, curb boxes work, and we move on our way, I said, well, I'm here.
John, the one fifty, twenty-six for labor, right? That's what you have here?
Yeah. No, not, that's just for the tier. Our labor would be paid, we'd do it ourselves. You're doing an amendment to the bond ordinance, okay, for forty-six thousand dollars, that includes installation of curb boxes, labor, whatever, you know, the storm drains, etc. This bond we need tonight, we need to introduce, so we have plenty of time to pay. The curb boxes, it's for, the curb boxes for phase one, the curb boxes for phase two, the labor on R O T. for phase two, because it's cheaper than having the contractor do it. And then, then the annual, not annual-
The yearly supplies.
The, yeah, probably more yearly, we're probably gonna have more, which is a good thing.
We don't have two-
Rocco, Rocco's, no, Rocco's down to one fire hydrant, he's down to no curb boxes, because he's been using here, we have a list of twenty other ones out there to replace.
Does he walk phase two and find out how many curb boxes?
They marked them all out, and had them seventy homes. I'm sorry? Hours at the last check, we're almost up to sixteen, that has to be replaced.
How long does it take to change a curb box?
They do, they can do two to four a day, depending on where it is. So that's why I'm saying our guys will need ten to fourteen days to do it, so-
That's fair, and there's a water main break or something else that will help?
True, true, right, right, but it's still cheaper than the contract, do it. Now, you have-
How long has some of these curb boxes been not-
Our guys don't know they're broken until they have to shut it off. Until the guy doesn't pay their bill, or there's a water main break, and that's when they go out to the house, shut it off, say, the person didn't pay the bill, what are they going to realize? Uh-oh.
Your address bill was been there since nineteen fifty-six.
Right.
So that's how it is.
Now, has, has our current superintendent wanted, you know, to see how the plan submitted prior to all of us on his, on his curb box replacement plan, on his heater replacement plan, yes, he does. The borough's never funded it, never funded it, so nothing's been done. That's the problem here.
My, my question is also, why are we paying overtime for them to replace these boxes?
You don't have to, you can, you can say, no, we're not gonna do that, you can do it from your normal hours, okay? But then, for two weeks, or more, because it has to be done, because vacations start and they're entitled to go on vacation, and we're down to one guy in most of July and August, one guy. So we need to bang this out in June, and I'm suggesting overtime so they can flush on straight time, because that hasn't started yet. There's been some fault behind this, yes.
Was it a saves out of the standing party?
It saves us-
If overtime during the day, overtime at night, what's the difference?
You can't get curb boxes at night.
No, right, why?
But no, because-
Why do you do the overtime at night with the-
Because then you can pay for the overtime out of the utility bond. Not out of your operating budget, for the utility-related capital. So our guy's own overtime is gonna have about eight grand, it's paid out of bond, because it's related to utility. And that's, that's why it's designated by- If you were to, you were to pay overtime on the flushing, come out of the operating budget. Sorry, there's a motion on table, Ray will not rescind.
Well, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna amend my motion to make it under fifty thousand. And, and that's all.
Just-
Cross off the forty, cross off there.
Okay.
One twenty, we go with the one.
So the, that's, that's- So is there a second on that motion?
Second.
In discussion? Um, again, that's, that's, that's gonna get us done for phase two, all we need annually. Um, I will give actual discussions on the year, and Union Ave, again, another day, because those are needs too. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mr. Maugh.
Yes.
Dela River.
Pass.
Hudson. Yes, Sandamare.
Yes.
Yastin.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Dela River.
No. Okay, um. Where's the, uh? Oh no, it's the last one, I, I apologize. Item H. will be tabled at this moment, the latter executive session, attorney client privilege, have to discuss on the bid for phase two, we will take action when we come out of executive on according to that contract. Item I, authorization to hire two D P W. summer help employees, again, it is in the budget, for two employees, part-time, obviously, summer help as we do each year. And the names of those persons are Jacob Lyon and Nicholas Michael Daguerre, I apologize. Every attorney.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
After we go back to where we, we just were. If we were to-
Well, then we get, then we get a motion first.
Okay.
Does a motion, who gives, who moves to hire two D P W. employees?
I think it's Lily Deljum, it's, uh, one is curious.
Okay. Is a motion, does anyone make that motion?
So-
Second, discussion, John?
Yeah, just to, we're talking about hydroflushing. All right. If we were to add another person in summer help, and take one summer help, and put him in the works department to flush hydrants. After for nothing, Jacob Lyon, he is a fire hydrant, he knows how to close hydrants, we have about a hundred and, I think, a hundred and seventy hydrants, you can do about fourteen or fifteen a day. That's all you strictly do, and he can start immediately.
He can only work, it's twenty-five hours.
That's twenty-five hours. They, they flush it for about fifteen minutes a night. Five hours a day?
Do we have the budget for that?
And then that comes out of utility budget, you take the overtime, and along with it save the money on salaries.
But again, I'm, I'm, I'm listening, but, you know-
Can we do that?
Again, I'm listening, but this discussion's been on for three, four months.
I sent that email out with that, I never, never respond.
Not to you.
Yes, I did, copied everybody's.
I did not get one about using summer help for flushing.
Well, just, just qualify, just, just qualify, just, just discuss again.
It was.
Not every deal.
No, right, yeah, right.
I will.
You guys start, finish staying on that hire? Just, the, yeah, immediate hire would be actually this week to hire, and, um, I want to see August first. So it took them like it on, how many hours?
They were starting August first?
No, they would begin like tomorrow, the next day, this week, Al wants to get in right away. Grass cutting season is just-
Well, this is good, and, you know, let's-
You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to, here's my only concern, you know, we all agreed to summer help, because we picked up the grass cutting at Old T. Murphy, and and Mark would be, and the only way that can be done is with summer help helping the garden control.
I agree, that's why I said the third person.
So, but you, you're not gonna go hire the third person until June ten.
Well, could we?
Unless you give me authority to hire, then I repeat it.
Well, you start with flushing, right?
Right, then you start, you know.
Again, I can, all I'm doing is hiring two, D P W. awarding, we can assign that internal. Um, my only concern is, you know, an eighteen-year-old by himself flushing hydrants, I don't know if that's, I know they buy the single thing, you know, we've, it's documented, there's no rules you can't do alone.
Hey, we had a house by the door, Dave's by himself is over there. A little more danger.
Yeah, that's a direction to everybody, you vote that way, and I'll, I'll issue this policy. So, but right now, you're just moving those two individuals.
Okay.
Now, as far as, as far as how you want them assigned, that's something we can do, you know?
Well, two are definitely gonna go, one, wherever the two are, are definitely gonna go to D P W.'s starting first.
Right. And then when you bring, so I would have to have-
You essentially have a backfill for the person here to reassign to hydrants, right?
So we want the recommendation to, to another part-time utility. You're assuming the one you're hiring, Jacob Lyon, is going to be that utility.
Well, he knows how to do it, so I'm talking about experience, the only way to do it is he'll come back and say, you gotta move it up slowly, you gotta do that, he knows how to do that.
All right, so then I should have to give you authority to D P W. to hire the third guy?
If that's where everybody here wants to.
All right, but you're not, right now, you're just authorized to hire the two, you have to bring them back. So, that's, that's the motion on table, and administratively, you can, you can have a conversation how you want me to, to split those employees.
Again, it's only to August first?
I can't, Mike, I don't have the, the exact dollar amount, it's in the budget, it's a dollar amount in the budget, and I, I wanna say that's for two months, so you, it wasn't a week or ten weeks, because it's starting now, you know? Don't want me to, I apologize.
Yep.
It's in the budget, it's a budget number based on twenty-five hours a week, if ten dollars an hour, whatever, whatever. All right, so there's motions to hire two individuals part-time, D P W. says, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dela River.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes, Sandamare.
Yes.
Yastin.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
De Maato.
Okay, and now, I need a motion to introduce resolution-
Five point two two.
Five point two two. Uh, this is the change order regio construction, the amount of forty-six thousand forty-five dollars, again, within the initial funded amount. The borough, I recommend the increase of forty-six four to the rate of contract price of five eighty-five, two oh three, the adjusted contract amount of six thirty-one, six fifty-three. Who makes that motion?
Someone.
Second, any further discussion? Roll call, please. Obviously, there's certification, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Cut, Hudson. Yes, Sandamare.
Yes.
Yastin.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
De Maato. Dela River.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I need a motion to approve entering into an agreement with Agnoli Engineering, for not to exceed an amount of thirty-one hundred, excuse me, thirty-eight hundred dollars, for the, I'll read you the, from the proposal. Provide engineer services with technical support, verify the accuracy of the forthcoming N J D E P. study, Louisville flood plane. Perpetual grace FEMA, Region Two FEMA is not updating, two thousand four, nineteen eighty-five hydraulic, hydrologic and hy- hydraulic study by O'Brien and Gere, other than Quanah River, the basin, for all subsequent Louisville flood map areas. However, the N J D E P. Borough of San Sanz and Flood Control indicated that D E P. will be working with U R S., as an engineering firm, to complete the reevaluation this summer of two thousand fourteen. A report to the D E P. outlining supporting Louisville's concerns with the accuracy of the prior flood study should be permitted to then by June two thousand fourteen. So I'm asking to approve not to exceed thirty-one hundred, to avoid a process of a letter of app revision for seventy-plus residents, who makes that motion?
Someone.
Second. Any further discussion?
Can we give that five point two three in case?
Five point two three, yes, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sandamare.
Yes.
Yastin.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
De Maato. Dela River.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes. Thank you, and now I need, um-
John, did you skip over the issue?
Yes, I tabled it, we gotta go to executive session for discussion. Then we have, I need a motion to authorize the advertisement of a, of a public meeting June eighteenth, seven P M. And I want to advertise in case there's quorum, if anybody members, do your best to attend, let me know to dance if you are not. This will be a presentation casual, with Agnoli Engineering and the residents, we will send mailings to invite to hear how we're proceeding with this flood inaccuracy. So who makes that motion for that approval?
Someone.
Second, any further discussion?
Do we go on a small certify?
Excuse me? No, we do not.
No?
Nope. No, because if we were to do a bond ordinance or assessing, we would, we would not, so this is here right now.
Is this just an open forum?
It's an open forum hesitation. But I just wanna advertise in case there's a quorum, the council could have-
Yeah, if there is a quorum, we need, we need that, and we need, right, that, oh.
Do we, do we have a motion?
Yes, someone.
Roll call, please. Roll call, take roll call. Hi.
Hi.
Okay. An emotional late public comment.
Someone, second.
Okay. Time, motion to speak. We did, but how, I knew it was a mistake.
It's hard, how do you justify yourself with that?
You do, yes, we're right.
And then, please, it's been handed in.
Just can't talk about the question. Sorry.
Now, let me say.
And another one.
For the employees, um, didn't we previously get employees from the state or the county, and they paid for it?
Uh, we still do, um, but now it's like a fifty-five-year-old program, you know, kind of limited in what they can do, we have two now.
What did you say?
Uh, yeah.
You wanna kind of rephrase that?
No.
You're limited in what they can do?
I don't, no, limit, there's very limitations, two individuals we got from the county, which are now at senior center.
Okay.
You know, couldn't possibly be in the back of the garbage, you know, that's what I, I didn't mean generally, I didn't mean older than older. The, the two people that were eligible via the county are at the senior center, helping with certain tasks, but to do garbage truck, cutting grass, yeah, it would be, it would be a tough pull to draw from, because it's a back, it's a, it's a back-to-work program, so tend, they tend to be, you know, closer to eight sixty, and, and the goal is to, to get them into workforce, try to find a career, and then perfect placement somewhere, and it's not for D P W. type of work.
Okay, uh, the backhoe that's presently, uh, Boston, is there any reason why it's not stored someplace?
There's no place to store it.
There's no, what, the, in the, the old firehouses, there, in, on Boston, is there an area in there?
It's full, that's full with, uh-
It's in the front room, actually.
To the front, yeah.
To the front.
But it's-
Yeah, but it's just out there.
But in the bay, in the bay is the newest utility truck, which, which has jet tools on it, or-
Excuse me?
You talk about in the garage?
Yeah.
Well, no, it was, it just, there's no room for it, the, 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 the first one was in there. Right. By itself.
That's true.
But we didn't have our newest box truck, which has all the tools and bells and whistles, that's kept inside. And, um, there's no room at D P W., because the D P W. days are full of-
Well, can't get something to put over, because it's gonna deteriorate a lot more so.
Yeah, you'd move it to Union Ave.
Am I, I wanna press that one, so. Um, for, well, first of all, if you were to move to Union Ave, what would you plan on doing with the Boston street?
It would remain vacant, and, and my opinion, it would be a backup for animal control when they flood again.
But that flood's over there.
The building is.
Oh, the, the-
The building does not though. When animal control has to evacuate again, they will someday, hopefully not soon, they will have a place to go. They used to go to Union Ave, and that's not good. That building, the borough could have, but it's not a story, that must have, that building needs to be put to use.
Oh, I don't agree with you, that kind of money, don't do it, I think it, I think it should be done, that the police department should go in there again.
Again, I respect your opinion, I absolutely agree, you know, the police department should give our own.
That's my opinion.
Roll call.
That's right, thank you.
Anyone else? See no on motion to close?
Someone.
Second. Okay, we will, uh, need a motion to go into executive session?
Someone.
At ten twenty-seven, um, all there.
Hi.
We have, um, one matter of potential litigation not of the borough that was put on executive, and a attorney-client privilege on the award of-
Negotiation.
I'm sorry? Negotiation, I'm sorry. Not, not of the borough, that's my statement, for attorney-client privilege, along with the, uh, Raptor Rose Phase Two, action will be taken after executive on that award of Raptor. So at ten twenty-seven, we enter with a two and a five in the six. Three, after couple, and are we good to go?
I'm on the answer.
I need someone to make a motion to, um, Doc, resolution number-
Five point two four.
Five point two four, which is the award of contract to regio construction for Raptor Rose Phase Two, in the amount of four hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred twenty dollars, who makes that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Yostin.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
De Maato.
Yes.
Dela River.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes, Sandamare.
Yes. And a motion to adjourn.
Someone.
All second. All there?
Hi.
Good night.